Are you searching for the best in online black radio? Then go to blacktalkradionetwork.com, helping you filter through the noise. Real talk, black talk.
So, I think that, as I say, their last conversation was on September 11th of 2001, and they've not spoken since. In looking around, I want to talk a little bit about how Little Rock has treated me in working on this book. I have to say that I was self-conscious about coming down here. In the course of doing my work, I was very conscious of, as I say, of placing myself in a position to judge, in the convenience of the 21st century, of judging people. It's very easy to take potshots at people from different eras, and not to have been here at the time, and not to have known how I would have behaved. There was a quote that I came across, I'm not going to read anything from my book tonight, but I just want to read one quote that I came across in the course of my research that I thought captured my attitude towards my work so beautifully, that it's the epigraph in the book. It's from Frederick Douglass, who says, "My interest in any man is objectively in his manhood and subjectively in my own manhood." And that's the way that I feel about this project, that, you know, this was really, it was really a chance for me to try to assess where I would have been, and what I would have done in 1957 if I had been here. You know, a white guy, a student at Central High School, or a citizen in Little Rock, or whatever, and whether I would have stood up, and how well I would have stood up. And that's, you know, that's the attitude with which I tried to write all of this. I tried to let the facts speak for themselves. I tried not to be any more judgmental than I needed to be, and not to take the easy shots. A lot of people in Little Rock, most people in Little Rock were very nice to me. I got help from all kinds of people at various research libraries. I placed ads in the Little Rock paper for people's recollections. I had many, many interesting experiences, some very moving experiences, and some surprising experiences. I mean, history is always more complicated, and the complications and surprises of history are what make it so enriching and satisfying to do. I mean, I remember, in particular, in response to one ad that I placed in the Democrat Gazette for people who remembered the picture, I wanted to find the people who were in the picture, and I wanted to find people who were at Central with Elizabeth, and I wanted to retrieve as many stories as I could. And I remember, I thought that was somebody heckling before over there, but I don't think it is. I remember one woman calling me, I didn't get many responses to these ads, but I remember that there was one woman who called me, and she said that, you know, "My father was a segregationist." A white woman calling me, "My father was a segregationist." But he came home that, he was, he came home the night that that picture of Elizabeth ran, it ran in the, I hope I get this right, it ran in the Democrat before it ran in the Gazette, because the Democrat was the evening paper, and so it ran, Will Kousen's picture ran first, and there was a very similar picture taken by a fellow named Johnny Jenkins that ran in the Gazette the next morning. Hazel, incidentally, was not identified in either picture, which is interesting. One of the editors, I talked to many of the newspaper people who were covering the story, and one of the editors said that things were so inflamed that there was no need to, no sense in identifying her, and besides, to us, she was just a generic white girl, a generic segregationist girl, and there was no need to identify her. But anyway, this person contacted me after the ad ran, and she said, "My father came home that night, and we were sitting around the dinner table," and I'll always remember him saying, "I don't want my kids going to school with niggers either, but they didn't treat that little black girl right." And I thought that was so moving, that that was what he said, and that she remembered it after all these years, that that picture scandalized, it embarrassed even segregationists, that picture. My only, the only fault that I would find, as I say, Hazel would tell you that apologizing, that coming forward was a mistake. To her, it was a bad mistake that she made, it was ill-advised, she says that she's sorry that she did it, and that all of these, all of these people on those pink slips in Mrs. Huckabee's file in Fayetteville, none of them ever came forward, or very few of them ever did. They went on to live their lives, nobody ever gave them any grief. I tried to call a few of them, and I didn't get very far with most of them. I remember calling up one person in particular, whose name was all over the files. I think probably a name that many of you would recognize, somebody in a position of some prominence in town, and he hung up on me, he wouldn't talk to me about it. I mean, that was one way to do it, which was to pretend that nothing happened. And so while I'm not judgmental about a lot of people, I am judgmental about the people who really ran amok that year, and were allowed to run amok by the school authorities, and really paid very little price for it, and in later years never did come forward. And I think also that there's this dangerous trend to pretend that things were not all that bad, and that, you know, that things have been exaggerated, and that the Little Rock Nine has sort of created a cottage industry of sympathy, and that enough already with this, and let's just move on, and it's all exaggerated. And I would urge people to, not just to read my book, which is, you know, is after all secondary history, you know, just go back and read some of the contemporaneous documents, go back into Mrs. Huckabee's files, and read those reports. She had no axe to grind, she was just recording what was happening. And so I think that that kind of revisionism which surfaced on the 50th anniversary, there was a story in the Democrat Gazette about, in which many of the people who were at Central in 1957 and 58 were saying that it was really just only a few bad kids, and things had not really been that bad. That needs, we have to guard against that. And I think that no one has been more vigilant about guarding against that than Elizabeth. One of the remarkable moments in the story is Elizabeth, Elizabeth, a woman who once used to have to bring a wastebasket lined with a plastic bag with her when she spoke in public for fear that she'd get sick while she was speaking, she was that scared of public speaking. Elizabeth, having become adept and passionate and articulate and confident enough to give a speech, was the one who was chosen to give a speech at the commemoration of the visitors' center the day after that article ran in the paper, and, you know, she as an eyewitness to all of this was, no one was better suited to counter this revisionist argument that things weren't, things were not really all that bad, and she gave a very impassioned speech about that, that was very moving. So this story has a very happy ending for me. I mean, I feel, I feel very proud of this book. I feel privileged to have met both Elizabeth and Hazel, and as I said, I admire them both, and that's a great treat for an author. I met a lot of interesting people doing this book. I've made probably ten visits to Little Rock, and I've enjoyed my trips down here, even when the town was snowbound and completely paralyzed, with maybe a half an inch of snow.
Context of White Supremacy. Justice, gusty renegade, in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Friday, April 12th, 2013, so I have been told. We will be back tomorrow. Compensatory call-in, 9:00 PM Eastern, 8:00 PM Central, 6:00 PM Pacific. Tune in if you find anything newsworthy in the next, I'll say, 16 hours or so. Shoot me an email, you can put it on the Facebook page, we'll see if we can include it for the news clips at the beginning of the program. Looking forward to exchanging views, feels like there have been a lot of things happening in the past seven days. I guess that's always the case under racism, white supremacy, but tune in tomorrow, 9:00 PM Eastern, 6:00 PM Pacific, compensatory call-in. The audio segment at the beginning of the broadcast today, that was the author of our current book, Elizabeth and Hazel, Two Women of Little Rock, David Margolick, Racist Suspect. And our caller last week, he asked about the epigraph in this book, which is a quote from Frederick Douglass, and I thought it was a very significant question, one we should keep in mind throughout the book. And I don't think I gave the best response, but I think he said he was going to think about it some more, and hopefully we'll all think about it as we move through the book. You just heard the author talk about the significance of that quote, and the context in which he gave his explanation. I do think I was kind of in the ballpark last week, it certainly wasn't the best, but I was, I will definitely say, what I was getting at is, in reading this book, in evaluating his portrayal, his interpretation of the events at Central High, we are also getting an evaluation of racist suspect David Margolick, and I think that will be on apparent throughout. But just getting more information on that quote, the caller last week, he said he wanted more information on where that Frederick Douglass quote came from, and I was so, I thought this was so profound, I shared it on the compensatory call-in last week as well, but just so it'll be in the archive of this book study session. This is from a speech that Frederick Douglass gave that's in, there's an anthology of his work, it's called The Life and Writings of Frederick Douglass, it's a five-volume anthology, it's in volume four, where you can get the entirety of this speech. It was reprinted several times, like much of his work has been. I'm just reading a little bit so that you get some of the context of this particular speech, that's the epigraph for our current book. Okay, it says, "Douglas's wife for 44 years was a free Negro woman he met while he was still a slave in Baltimore. Two years after she died in 1882, he married a white woman, Helen Pitts, who had been his secretary. This brought him a storm of criticism from both blacks and whites. In reply, Douglass sought to give an exact definition of his feelings about color and race." This is all Douglass's words now. "The fundamental and everlasting objection to slavery is not that it sinks a Negro to the condition of a brute, but that it sinks a man to that condition," he wrote. "I base no man's right upon his color and plead no man's rights because of his color. My interest in any man is objectively in his manhood and subjectively in my own manhood." End quote. That last sentence there is the epigraph for Mr. Margolick's book, "My interest in any man is objectively in his manhood and subjectively in my own manhood." You just heard him in the audio clip give further detail on the significance of that quote. We will go ahead and get started. We left off last week, we were just, first study session, I think, just getting some of the background information about that day, more background information about Hazel, Elizabeth, what things were like for them growing up. I remember some of the details standing out, some of the racist comments that her father made. I don't think Margolick ever labels Hazel's white parents as racist, even when, I think the anecdote that he gives about Hazel playing with some other black children, that her father had cracked some sort of joke, like, "Make sure, you know, you look at your hands, don't want any of that charcoal to have rubbed off on you." He says something to that effect. He had made some other comments, but didn't classify any of them as racist. I don't remember. Hmm. Anyway, that's kind of where we left off at last week, just getting background information on these two women, females, and then things will proceed. I'm very much looking forward to getting more into the book. Also, real quick before we get started, Billy Clinton is ubiquitous throughout this story. He was a liar, he was a young child at the time that these events were unfolding in the late 1950s, but his name is all over this, we're going to hear him as an audio opener before this book concludes, but just the influence, the unseen hand of Billy Clinton, the talk that David Margolick gave, that I gave a snippet from, it's about an hour, 10 minutes, it's from October of 2011, which is the same year that his book was published. It was in Little Rock, Arkansas, at the Clinton School of Public Service at the University of Arkansas. So, Bill Clinton's influence all over these events, slick willy, former president. We will go ahead and get started, I think we're picking up on chapter seven, if you are following along in the book, which is probably good, because there are photographs that are of interest, so follow along. We are starting out, chapter seven. Again, David Margolick, 2011 publication, Elizabeth and Hazel, Two Women of Little Rock.
Chapter Seven. The men of the Arkansas National Guard continued to ring the school, watching idly as Elizabeth walked by. Since she was no longer physically trying to enter Central, she was of little consequence to them, but others continued to watch her. "Here she is, this little girl, this tender little thing, walking with this whole mob baying at her like a pack of wolves seeking to destroy a little lamb," Benjamin Fine of the New York Times later recalled. "But Elonsome of the St. Louis Argus, a black weekly, was also looking on. 'The mob of twisted whites, galvanized into vengeful action by the inaction of the heroic state militia, was not willing that the young schoolgirl should get off so easily,' he wrote. Elizabeth Eckford had walked into the wolf's lair, and now that they felt she was fair game, the drooling wolves took off after their prey. The hate-mongers, who looked exactly like other normal white men and women, took off down the street after the girl. Elizabeth's goal remained the bus stop on 16th and Park. She was scared, especially after someone shouted, 'Push her!' But if she let herself go, she feared she'd begin to cry, something she didn't want to do in front of so many people. She worried that if she said or did anything unusual, the crowd might even turn uglier. There were more shouts, 'Go home, nigger! You will never get into this school! We don't want you here! Go back where you came from!' But she looked placid, unflappable, as if she wasn't hearing anything. At one point, a major in the guard wearing command pilot wings held up his hands and forced the mob to back off a bit. Another soldier, holding his billy club at both ends, stared vacantly into space. John Chancellor was among the many reporters looking on. 'He wanted a story, a good story,' David Halberstam later wrote, 'but this was something beyond a good story, a potential tragedy so terrible that he had hoped it really wasn't happening. He was terribly frightened for her, frightened for himself, and frightened about what this told him about his country.' Chancellor's cameraman got it all on film. By the time she reached the bus stop, Elizabeth felt as if she couldn't walk another step. She sat down at the edge of the empty bench, and for the first time, began to cry. The cat calls continued, largely from grown-ups. The school bell had rung, and most of the students had gone inside. 'Drag her over to this tree!' someone shouted. Some reporters drifted back to the school, whereby now the seven other black students had been rebuffed en masse, with little of the pain or menace Elizabeth encountered. 'The other black girls,' one reporter noted, 'didn't appear nervous, one even smiled.' Some thirty or forty people milled around the bench. No one made any move to harm Elizabeth, but there was lots of laughing and jeering. 'The country might just as well be handed over to the communists,' one man shouted repeatedly. Someone, perhaps a plainclothes policeman, moved the crowd away. A few newsmen, Jerry Donow and Ray Mosley of the Arkansas Gazette, Paul Welch of Life, created an informal cordon around Elizabeth, though she thought they were only trying to overhear whatever she might be saying. A reporter from Time tried to interview her. 'No comment,' she told him. 'I'm minding my own business.' Then a black man, one of the very few in the crowd, offered to escort her away. It was L.C. Bates, Daisy's husband, whom Elizabeth recognized from his pictures in the state press. Given the explosiveness of the situation and the conspicuousness of any black face in that immaculately segregated crowd, it was remarkable that Bates had even shown up. The day before, when he had also made an appearance, he admitted that he'd been scared as hell. Even more remarkable, as he furtively showed Elizabeth, he was carrying a gun tucked into his pants pocket. It frightened her. She wanted it and him nowhere near her. He offered to escort her out of there, but Elizabeth knew that her mother would never approve of her going off with a strange man, however honorable his intentions. Benjamin Fine sat down alongside her, introduced himself, and asked for her name. 'I'm not here to hurt you,' he added. 'Nothing's going to happen. You'll be all right, honey.' Then Fine, the father of three young daughters himself, put his arm around Elizabeth. 'Don't let them see you cry,' he urged. That gesture, the act of a white man touching a black girl, appeared to ignite the crowd, already smoldering over the presence of the Yankee press. Then the scream went up, 'There he is, the nigger lover! He's from the Times! Throw him out! Let's lynch him! Let's cut his nuts out! We'll fix him!' Fine recalled afterward. Years later, a woman interviewing Fine asked him whether, by seeking to comfort Elizabeth that day, he had crossed some ethical line. 'A reporter has to be a human being, my dear,' he replied. Robert Shackney of CBS also approached Elizabeth. Television news was in its infancy, a strange hybrid of newsreels and radio, its ground rules had yet to develop. Shackney could see that Elizabeth was petrified, but he pressed ahead. 'Can you tell us who you are?' he asked, as gently as a gruff-looking and sounding man wielding a microphone could. Elizabeth said nothing. Shackney looked back uncertainly toward his crew. 'Rolling,' his cameraman piped in, and tried again. 'Can you tell me your name, please? Are you going to school here at Central High?' Again, Elizabeth remained silent. 'You don't care to say anything, is that right?' It was. Terrence Roberts also appeared and urged Elizabeth to leave with him. Terrence, the young man Elizabeth had fancied at Dunbar, was dignified and polite. 'One of his ancestors had clearly been a tribal chieftain or something like that in Africa,' Mrs. Huckabee theorized. But he lived closer to Central than Elizabeth did, and she figured would accompany her only partway home, turning off on Howard Street. 'Better to stay put,' she thought. 'This way, if something were to happen to her, at least someone would see it.' One of those who'd accompanied Elizabeth on her walk that morning had been the Reverend Colbert Cartwright of the Pulaski Heights Christian Church, one of Little Rock's wealthiest white congregations. He had wanted to express his solidarity with the black students, but didn't know quite how. He'd considered joining the black pastors accompanying the children, but feared that might seem paternalistic. So, as Elizabeth had made her way down Park, he had resolved to be a witness, following slightly behind her, taking notes. When the screams flew at Elizabeth, epithets I had never heard before or since, he later recalled, he too had been impressed by the calm dignity with which she made her lonesome pilgrimage. When he reached the bench, Cartwright saw a lone white woman sit down alongside Elizabeth. What struck me with force was the fact that neither segregationist nor integrationist preachers had bothered to help. He wrote, "Her only help came from this single woman, who was generally regarded as an intellectual communist. Who was neighbor unto that girl?" Actually, the woman's name was Grace Lorch, and no one who had ever encountered and either admired or reviled her and her husband in prior years in locales would have been surprised to see her on that bench, alongside that black girl, in Little Rock. Chapter Eight. For Grace Lonergan Lorch and her husband Lee, civic engagement had long been second nature. Grace had been first to the barricades, fighting for herself and other women teaching in the Boston Public Schools during and after World War II for the right to keep their jobs after marriage. A plaque honoring her still hangs outside a school there. In 1949, Lee, a mathematician, lost his position at City College in New York for leading the fight to integrate Stuyvesant Town, the massive housing complex on Manhattan's east side then owned by the Metropolitan Life Insurance Company. Lee Lorch was subsequently fired by Penn State, where he'd found another teaching job for attempting to sublet his vacant Stuyvesant Town apartment to a black couple. For five years after that, the Lorches lived in Nashville, where Lee taught at Fisk University, a historically black institution. While there, they petitioned to enroll their daughter in an all-black public school. It was, they argued, the school closest to their home. They were turned down. Lee Lorch had once been a communist. Whether or not he stayed in the party, he remained a sympathizer. This made him a prime target for various red-baiting investigations. When he refused to answer questions from the House Un-American Activities Committee, Fisk too let him go. Only one school in the country then would have him, Philander Smith, the historically black college in Little Rock, to which the family moved in September 1955. Because he believed in the principles of decency and justice, and the equality of all men under God, Lee Lorch and his family have been hounded through four states from the north to the south like refugees in displaced camps, Ethel Payne of the Chicago Defender wrote in May 1956. And in the process of punishing Lee Lorch for his views, three proud institutions of learning have been made to grovel in the dust and bow the knee to bigotry. The Lorches again moved into a black neighborhood, and, this time with the Brown decision behind them, again tried to send their daughter to an all-black school, again without success. When the young girl was barred from using the public roller skating rink with her black friends, her father protested to the Little Rock Parks Commission. He also became an official with the state NAACP, just as he had been in Tennessee. On the morning of September 4th, Lee Lorch was at one end of Central, observing how the great drama was unfolding. Meantime, his wife, who had just left their daughter at her junior high school, approached Central from the other direction, and happened upon Elizabeth, sitting on the bench. To the cat calls of the milling crowd, she too tried speaking to the girl, without success. Then she turned toward her detractors. 'Couldn't they see that this was just a kid? Six months from now,' she told them, 'they'd all hang their heads in shame.' Her scolding only made things worse. Elizabeth was sorry she'd come, and hoped she'd quickly leave. Cries of 'nigger lover' and 'Yankee' filled the air. Lorch then took Elizabeth by the arm, and pushing aside anyone in her path, headed toward Ponder's, the ice cream and sandwich shop across the street, to call a cab. The store owner saw her coming, and promptly locked the door in her face. 'Won't somebody please call a taxi?' Lorch pleaded. She was told to go back to New York, or at least to act like a white person. Elizabeth now got a bit of protection from an unlikely source, the National Guard. After seeing her rebuffed outside the drugstore, Major Lilburn Harris ordered a subordinate, Sergeant William Corker, to keep an eye on Elizabeth until the city bus arrived, then to help her to board it. When Elizabeth and Grace Lorch resumed their places on the bench, Corker positioned himself unobtrusively nearby, so unobtrusively, in fact, that Elizabeth never knew he was there. Though he had a carbine and thirty rounds of ammunition... Though he had a carbine and thirty rounds of ammunition, Corker was nearly as frightened as she; there was menace in the air. While he wanted to console her, he could see the tears running down her cheeks; he felt it wiser to say nothing. Afterward, Elizabeth couldn't guess just how long she'd sat on that bench. Time put it at thirty-five minutes. The bus finally pulled up. Again taking Elizabeth's arm, Lorch shoved her way toward the open door. Two boys tried to block their way. "I'm just waiting for one of you to touch me!" Lorch shouted. "I'm just aching to punch somebody in the nose." Some hooligans tried to board the bus, but the driver threw them off. As it pulled away and the crowd began to disperse, the "call to colors" sounded outside Central. What struck Bobby Jones of the Pine Bluff commercial was that everyone, students, protesters, soldiers, stood at attention. All considered themselves good, patriotic Americans. Then, once the last note sounded, they all resumed whatever they'd been doing. Afterward, Elizabeth was to tell the press how relieved she had been when Lorch showed up that day, but she was just being polite. She too saw Lorch as a provocateur, come to stir up trouble. She assured the older woman that she could now fend for herself, and as the bus approached Woodrow, Lorch got off. Elizabeth never saw her again. For what she did that day, which was widely reported, Grace Lorch came in for both praise and abuse. "The warm and courageous heart of a gentle white-haired woman in Little Rock embodied mankind at its best," wrote Time. But the Lorches also had a cross burned on their lawn and dynamite shoved under their garage door, classmates shunned and abused their daughter, and they were implicated in a grand international conspiracy. There was but a handful of communists in Little Rock, and here was at least a fellow traveler at center stage, confirming, at least for some, that desegregation was yet another red plot. One state official charged that Lorches' "communist masters" had directed her. Little Rock's newly-elected segregationist congressman Dale Alford later charged on the floor of the House of Representatives that Lorches' "yoman service to the communist apparatus was so great that she was sent to Arkansas via Nashville, Tennessee, and other points to help create racial incidents in my state." As for her "exhibition of alleged friendship" with Elizabeth, she had performed that stunt only after making sure the cameras were rolling. Grace Lorch was hauled before the Senate Internal Security Subcommittee, where Senator William Jenner of Indiana labeled her a "troublemaker." "You want to attract attention by protecting that little colored girl in Little Rock," he charged. That she'd been subpoenaed, one observer said, raised the question of whether it is subversive for a southern white woman to treat a Negro child with kindness. Fearful of being red-baited, the NAACP quickly distanced itself from her and her husband. "Thurgood Marshall has been busy poisoning as many people as he can against us," Lee Lorch complained in October 1957. The following month, the group's field secretary, Clarence Laws, made the ostracism official. "The best contribution you could make to the cause of full citizenship for Negroes in Arkansas at this time would be to terminate, in writing, your affiliation with the Little Rock branch, NAACP," he told Lee Lorch. While there was plenty of hate mail, letters of praise were few, or so the Lorches initially thought. One night, a black man visited their home. Like the Lorches themselves, he presumed that the house was being watched, and he insisted that the porch light be turned out before stating why he'd come. He then explained that he worked at the local post office and handed them a package. In it were letters to Grace Lorch from all over the world, about to be returned to their senders. Despite her sudden notoriety, Grace Lorch, Little Rock, Arkansas, was technically an insufficient address. After the man left, the Lorches read portions of the letters to each other. "We have spoken with much deference of you in our lessons of ethics," some Catholic high school girls wrote from Brussels. The man, whose name the Lorches never learned, later returned with a second package. But such gestures were rare, and taking it from all sides, the Lorches' days in Little Rock were numbered. In film footage of Elizabeth at the bus stop, one can spot a very serious-looking young woman brushing by. It's Hazel, purposefully proceeding to play hooky. Rather than report to classes, she had decided to make a holiday out of the occasion. Off to Sammy Dean's house she went; she may even have danced on Steve's show that afternoon. Not for an instant did she think she'd done anything wrong, or momentous, or that would mark her for life. Chapter Nine "There are times," Elizabeth later observed, "when you just know you need your mama." When she had boarded the bus with Grace Lorch, Elizabeth knew where she had to go, to the school for the blind and deaf Negro. When she got there, walking along the unpaved street from the bus stop to the main entrance, she headed straight down the stairs to the laundry room. Reports from Central, some highly inaccurate, had gone out over the radio, though Bertie Eckford hadn't needed them; she already knew something terrible had happened. When Elizabeth entered the room, she found her mother turned away, looking out the window; simply from her posture she could see that Bertie had been praying. Elizabeth walked up quietly, but her mother sensed that she was there. When Bertie swung around, Elizabeth could see that she'd also been crying. Elizabeth tried to say that she was all right, but she couldn't speak. "Don't let anybody see you crying, baby. Brace up," her mother told her. "That's just what some people want to do: see you crying." Then she sent Elizabeth home. She quickly followed, making her a bacon-and-tomato sandwich with Kool-Aid for lunch. That afternoon, Elizabeth, along with the other black students, went to the local FBI office to give a statement. When Elizabeth's father had heard the reports, he had gone looking for her, bringing along a .38 caliber gun with the only three bullets he could find. He had reconciled himself to being killed, but took a roundabout route to Central; friends dissuaded him en route from doing anything rash. Daisy Bates had also tuned in. "A Negro girl is being mobbed at Central High! Oh my God!" I cried, she later wrote. "It must be Elizabeth! I forgot to notify her where to meet us." In the black community, there was a pregnant pause as word spread that the Eckford girl had been mobbed; no one was quite sure what had happened to her. For a time, Will Counts had been too busy taking more pictures to consider what he already had. After getting four shots of Elizabeth on the bench, he'd scurried back to the other end of Central just in time to record Lieutenant Colonel Marion Johnson, nightstick in his hands, turning away the other black students. At that point, the action, at least at Central, at least that day, was over. If Counts lingered, he might not get into that afternoon's paper, so he rewound the film, eleven frames remained on the roll, and rushed back to the Democrat. Only in the darkroom, when he unspooled the newly-developed film and zeroed in on negative number fifteen, did he realize he'd gotten something special. That small rectangular frame had captured everything: the dignity and determination of the black girl and the vituperation of the whites, all crystallized in one particular, readily-understandable face. The white girl's name he never got; as for the black girls, because he'd written it down either wrong or illegibly, "Eckford" was how it would get to or emerge from the typesetter. At least two other photographers, Johnny Jenkins of the United Press and Lord Dinkins of the Memphis Commercial Appeal, had captured almost the exact same moment, though, judging from the positions of various bystanders, Counts actually took his shot last, following Dinkins and then Jenkins. Working for the afternoon Democrat, though, Counts's would be the first in print. Jenkins's picture appeared on the front page of the next morning's Gazette; as for Dinkins's, it didn't appear at all; perhaps it was too incendiary or incriminating for the more conservative Memphis paper. Instead, the Commercial Appeal ran a far less heartrending picture of Elizabeth at the bus stop and understated what it showed. "She sat composedly," the caption stated, "surrounded by newsmen, photographers, and curious onlookers. She ignored the crowd, a few of whom mildly heckled her." The Memphis paper was not alone; even ostensibly progressive southern papers didn't run the picture. Within hours of the episode at Central, Elizabeth and Will Counts were all over the front page of the Democrat. There was Elizabeth approaching the school, then Elizabeth talking to the guardsmen, then Elizabeth taking directions from them. Finally, nestled in the bottom right-hand corner, was Elizabeth with Hazel. "Cat calls," the caption declared. "Elizabeth Eckford, fifteen, the first Negro student to attempt entry to Little Rock Central High today, walks down Park, followed by a crowd of some two-hundred-and-fifty shouting whites." Hazel was not identified, nor would she be in the next morning's Gazette. Jean Foreman, then a young reporter on the Gazette, explained why. To the editors, she was merely a generic segregationist white kid whose name didn't really matter. And why would so sensational a picture not have been displayed more prominently, bigger, and, as the newsroom types say, above the fold? "Little Rock was a tinderbox," Foreman explained. "It seemed foolhardy to inflame things even further." Cloaked in anonymity, cropped to look a bit less central than she was, Hazel had gotten a bit of a pass, but only in those two small respects. Everything else about Counts's picture, the light, the positioning, the choreography, the medium itself, conspired to make her more conspicuous and odious. In the first several shots Counts took that day, Hazel was directly behind Elizabeth, either partially or completely obscured. Only when Elizabeth, in part to avoid walking directly into the photographers, turned slightly to her left, was Hazel revealed, and at that point, she merely glowered. But then Elizabeth walked forward, toward the edge of the frame. She is slightly out of focus, her expression almost impossible to discern, though if you study it carefully, you notice that her left eyebrow is slightly arched, and her left eye, barely visible behind the sunglasses, betrays a profound sadness, the faint outline of a broken heart. Meantime, Hazel came fully into view, squarely in the ground-glass center of Counts's rangefinder, and at that very instant, she screamed. As Hazel stepped into prominence, her confederates all but vanished. At the moment the shutter clicked, Sammy Dean Parker had turned around, apparently because someone, was it her father, had called her name. Though Sammy Dean was to become one of the most flamboyant of the segregationist students at Central, for now, the world saw only the back of her head. The two older frumpy women to Elizabeth's left, who leered at her in Jenkins's picture, were momentarily becalmed in Counts's. And Mary Ann Burleson, who had been hollering with the others, looked mild, detached, even distracted, when Counts captured her. When it comes down to it, Counts's famous photograph of Elizabeth Eckford is really more of Hazel Bryan. It is on Hazel that the eyes land and linger. Despite the tricky lighting, her face is perfectly exposed. The early-morning September sun shines on her like a spotlight. It hits her from the side, painting her face in a stark chiaroscuro that makes it look more demonic still. She's caught mid-vowel, with her mouth gapingly, ferociously open. At that instant, and in perpetuity, Hazel Bryan, always the performer, has the stage completely to herself. Others played their own small parts in the picture, but "the mouth," she said later, "was mine." And dressing that morning as she had, trying to look all grown-up and sexed-up, she had masked how young she really was. She was only fifteen, but she would always be seen and judged as an adult. And then there was the solemnity and permanence of film itself and of the era in which it had been exposed. Hazel's act hadn't been an expression of some grand, well-developed worldview; it had been tossed off, flippant, fleeting, but in a photograph, a stark, black-and-white photograph, it would appear premeditated, even ordained. Were others in the picture conspicuously misbehaving as well, Hazel might have found some small solace. But everyone else is just milling about; no one is moving menacingly, and no one is saying much of anything. Only one face, the smiling young man behind Hazel, wearing a v-neck shirt trimmed in black, looking to his left, could conceivably share some of Hazel's culpability. He appears to be another of those blithe, sadistic bystanders who pop up in photographs of horrific events, the smiling spectators at lynchings, the German soldiers cheerily looking on as the beards of Orthodox Polish Jews are shorn. In fact, far from relishing Elizabeth's predicament, that young man, Joe Holland, was thinking other thoughts. To Holland, a sophomore at Central new to Little Rock, going to school with blacks was no big deal; he'd done it elsewhere. He admired Elizabeth's bravery that morning. What had so struck and amused him, enough for him to turn smilingly to his friend to talk about it, was Hazel. "Listen to the mouth on her," he'd said. Why, he'd never heard a girl cuss like that before. No apologies would ever be demanded or expected from anyone else in Will Counts's photograph. In the universe he had created, if nowhere else, Hazel was every bit as alone as Elizabeth. By afternoon, the picture had already sparked controversy. At a press conference, Faubus was asked whether the police had been ordered not to help Elizabeth. "Definitely not," he replied. In the meantime, paperboys were delivering the evening Democrat all over Little Rock. One subscriber was Elizabeth Huckabee, who, as Central's vice-principal for girls, was officially responsible for both Elizabeth and Hazel. "Read the awful story," Mrs. Huckabee, who'd been teaching at Central since 1930, wrote in her diary that night. "Saw the awful pictures, the dignity of the rejected Negro girl, the obscenity of the faces of her tormentors. Graded papers to occupy mind." The picture was presumably the topic of many a dinner conversation in Little Rock that night, conversations that did not always fall along predictable racial lines. The segregationist father of a Central student named Anne Childress expressed his outrage over it. "I don't want those niggers going to school with my kids," he declared, "but those people didn't treat that little girl right." Even segregationist leaders weren't about to defend Hazel; she'd given bigotry a bad name. The head of the segregationist Mothers League, Margaret Jackson, had specifically told her daughters to avoid getting into such situations, or, as she liked to put it, "becoming stirrs." The editor of the pro-segregation Arkansas Recorder, John Wells, also found the spectacle disgusting. "White anger," he wrote, "should be directed at meddlesome courts, a weak-kneed governor, and the NAACP, and not at Elizabeth and her compatriots. It is one thing to assert that the Negro children should remain at Dunbar; another to threaten and intimidate them," he wrote. "They are the last who should be condemned." Given the paper's segregationist leanings, many of Little Rock's blacks didn't take the Democrat. But that evening, footage of Elizabeth's walk made the national news. Among those in watching in Chicago was Gerald Bullock, an official with the Illinois NAACP, who filed a mock report to Lee Blackwell of the Chicago Defender. "Dear Lee, today, September 4th, 1957, I witnessed an amazing display of military daring. I flicked on my television set to a news program, and suddenly I was in Little Rock, Arkansas. There, before my startled eyes, were ranged a magnificent group of soldiers, armed to the teeth, bayonets fixed, surrounding a large stone-and-brick structure. The commentator said there were two thousand troops, and they were Arkansas's finest national..." National Guardsmen. Splendid in their battle dress, they were there on orders from Governor Orville Faubus to give their lives if necessary to protect the state's vital institutions from an implacable invader. At the moment I saw no invading military force, but lining the streets were throngs of admiring citizens, obviously awed by this panorama of armed might. Then, suddenly, the camera picked up the invading force, striding resolutely forward through a jeering crowd of men, women, and children. It seemed to be a young girl, of perhaps some fifteen years, and she must have weighed all of ninety-eight pounds, Lee. Quite pretty, too, but of course I was not deceived. No doubt this urbane appearance was camouflage, a sinister military disguise. Peering closely at her slender form, I saw she carried under her left arm what appeared to be a book, but was, no doubt, a terrible secret weapon. At least the soldiers and crowds seemed to think so, for suddenly the military might of old Arkansas stiffened, and the citizenry went scampering in all directions. For a moment I thought the stout line might waver and break, but no, the long years of stern training now evidenced their value. The line held, and rifles at the ready, these brave men faced the invader. She made no threatening motion, hurled no grenades, but she didn't falter either. Clinging firmly to her secret weapon, she marched straight up to the nearest soldier. His face was pale, his lips grim. Now, I thought, I am about to see carnage unimaginable. I wondered if the courage of Arkansas's finest would be equal to the task. It was. The girl seemed to be saying something to the soldier. I wondered what men of monster-from-out-of-space this could be that she showed no fear. No question, but it was confidence in her secret weapon which gave her such audacity. But perhaps this was not meant to be a frontal attack, but only a reconnoitering maneuver, because she suddenly turned and left the scene, the danger at least momentarily averted, the military might relaxed. Now, Lee, my wife tells me I misinterpreted the whole thing. She says that little girl was no invader from outer space, but only Elizabeth Eckford, the daughter of a taxpaying Arkansas citizen. She was, it seems, only trying to enter a public school to enroll. Also watching in Chicago that night was Hazel's aunt, Katie Morris, who called to say she'd seen her on television. Hazel's parents were neither terribly surprised nor dismayed by what she had done. They knew Hazel wasn't shy, and they shared her sentiments, but they were displeased with her visibility. It was just her up there, her and her big mouth, her mother said afterward. Besides, she should have been in school, perhaps because they were so close, they were about the same age, and both their fathers and their mothers were siblings. Hazel's cousin Linda had no qualms telling her that the picture would end up, as she put it, biting her in the butt. Hazel laughed that off. Mrs. Huckabee's brother was alarmed enough to telephone. Bill called again from New York horrified by the picture of pupil insulting to Negro girl, Mrs. Huckabee wrote in her journal. Just about the only person paying no attention to the picture was Elizabeth. Perhaps she was still numb, or perhaps, living through it, had been enough. Chapter ten. Reporters badgered Daisy Bates, either to let them interview Elizabeth, or to chastise her for sending someone so fragile into the line of fire. It was just what the segregationists were saying, Elizabeth had been ill-used, to induce sympathy. The syndicated columnist Bob Considine claimed that Bates had prepared Elizabeth as meticulously as the general manager of the Brooklyn Dodgers, Branch Rickey, had coached Jackie Robinson. The Eckford girl underwent careful schooling and priming, he wrote. By the time Mrs. Bates finished briefing her, the child would have walked across a mined field, which is just about what she had to do. In fact, until her father brought her to the Bates home on the afternoon of her walk, Elizabeth had never met Daisy Bates, and when she did, she let her have it. Why had Bates forgotten her, she asked, with what Bates later called cold hatred in her eyes. From that moment on, Bates tried to win Elizabeth over, with little success. Elizabeth never stopped believing that to Bates and the rest of the NAACP, the nine black students were foot soldiers in a cause for which they'd been woefully unprepared. The chaplain at Ole Miss, the Reverend Will Campbell, who'd been observing events in Little Rock for the National Council of Churches, stopped by the Eckford home that night. After the way the white community had behaved, he felt he had to. Elizabeth's protectors, he noted, had been a communist, Grace Lorch, and a Jew, Benjamin Fine. Where had all of Little Rock's Christians been? Actually, the Reverend Colbert Cartwright, who'd walked alongside Elizabeth outside Central that first day, also came by the house, on the Saturday following the disturbances. He told her how much he admired her, and of the shame he felt as a white person. Elizabeth clasped my hands with the same firmness she had shown in everything she had done, he later wrote. No, Reverend Cartwright, it's just some of the white people who have stirred things up, was how he quoted her in his sermon the next day. She expressed no bitterness, but also said there was no way she would ever resume a segregated education. Cartwright told his congregation that Elizabeth had more guts than any of them. Central's whites were all the poorer for not yet knowing her. As he wrote in his unpublished memoirs, Cartwright devoted that sermon to Elizabeth because, I wanted to put a human face on the colored race. Portrait in ebony, he called it. Untouched by the gesture, some thirty members of his Sunday Bible class promptly demanded his dismissal, and the Arkansas State Police began compiling a file on him. The day after the disturbances, the black children stayed home, though the Memphis Commercial Appeal reported that Elizabeth had again showed up at Central and again been turned away. Returning to school made no sense until the politicians and the courts sorted things out. But for the trio of white girls in the picture, the attention proved addictive. They reappeared outside Central, spouting the segregationist line for the newsmen. They were desegregation's real victims, they insisted, blacks now had their choice of schools, while whites were saddled with just one. Invariably Sammy Dean Parker and Mary Ann Burleson spoke first, with Hazel, her brow perpetually furrowed, chiming in a beat later. The minute the black students walked in, she declared, they'd walk out. Whites should have rights, too, she barked, niggers aren't the only ones that have a right. Hazel's sudden visibility surprised the folks at Steve's show, they had thought her passions ran only to dancing and boys. Severe restrictions were promptly placed on reporters seeking statements from Central students, an edict that pretty much ended Hazel's brief career in commentary. That morning, September fifth, Elizabeth and Hazel landed on millions of doorsteps. Elizabeth became, as Ted Poston of the New York Post put it, probably the most widely-known high school student in the whole United States, with the unidentified white girl to her rear running a close second. Someday, the people of Arkansas, North Carolina, Kentucky, Texas, Georgia, and other states north and south of the line will recognize the quality of heroism in such persons as Elizabeth Eckford and Dorothy Counts, declared the New York Times, linking Elizabeth to another fifteen-year-old black girl who'd undergone a similar ordeal in Charlotte, North Carolina. Elizabeth was taunted, insulted, and rejected, but she knows in her heart that she acted honorably, patiently, and bravely, the Chicago Daily News observed. In contrast, the snarling, hooting, menacing mob cannot face themselves in a mirror without recognizing brutishness, meanness, and cowardice. Murray Kempton of the New York Post compared Elizabeth to the two United States senators from Arkansas, William Fulbright and John McClellan, neither of whom would fault Faubus. We can only, with wonder and gratitude, reflect how much better a private child is than two public men, he wrote. Bob Considine called Elizabeth aristocratic, and predicted that her walk through the gantlet of vilification would be a milestone in the annals of integration. Meanwhile, the Fresno Bee described, a white girl, a possible classmate, who bellows imprecations, her mouth open in hate, like a dog's.
Context of white supremacy. The number to dial is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. The number again, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code, five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. Wow. Lots that could be said about that particular section. One thing that I will get in, I had been wondering, just since we've heard about so many different public officials, former President Clinton, former President Eisenhower, Governor Faubus, different members of the Supreme Court, members of the NAACP, on and on and on. I had been wondering what were some of the other main public officials in Arkansas doing at that time? What were the senators doing? I had been just wondering that, if anybody wants to take any time, do any research, if there are accounts, written interviews, if it's in the Times or some magazines, or if there's archived footage of what the senators, Arkansas senators at the time, William Fulbright and John McClellan, what they were saying about all of this? I would be interested in checking that out. Again, this is one of those where you have a lot of powerful white people commented on this, had, you know, a comment or two to say about what was happening in these events, so, yeah, I would be interested in checking that out if anybody is interested in doing research, or any other aspect of what happened around these events. If you do some research and find something that we should keep in mind while we are doing our studying, share. Right on, I will hit the phone lines, the folks, let's see, we should have nine three two five and one nine two two, both of your lines are open. If anybody else dials in, I'll open the lines up as I see hands.
Greetings.
Good to hear from you, sir.
I just, um, I apologize, I just checked in, so I missed the first half. Um, I'll save my comments after the second one, so, uh, I just want to, wanted to say greetings to you, to the callers, and, uh, and everybody else that's listening on Podcast land. Pretty much, thank you, sir.
Right on, good to hear from you. We'll look out for your commentary later on in the program.
Yeah, can you mute my line? I have some issues with my phone, so just open it up after the second one.
Yes, sir.
For now, yeah, because I can't do it myself, my phone, I have some issues with it, so.
Can do.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Uh, greetings, guys, to the other callers. Once again, with Hazel and Elizabeth. Uh, I just want to comment briefly, uh, a little bit out of chapter six, before I go into, uh, chapter seven. Hazel, it said briefly in, uh, chapter six that, you know, she normally takes the bus to school, but that particular day, anticipating trouble, her father had driven her on the morning of September the fourth. I thought that it would have been more apropos that she would be anticipating starting trouble that day. And the other students, if you notice in, another thing that was interesting, if you noticed the picture, that the other students were carrying books, or notebooks, paper, pencils of some sort, like they were coming to an institute of learning. Our, uh, local races here, Hazel, doesn't have any of that. All she's got is a newspaper in her hand. And the fact that the, the parents' places of employment actually allowed them time, off from the job, to go down and remove their kids from the school because it was being integrated. I thought, you know, that part of chapter six, you know, I had to get here. But, excuse me, chapter seven, the book, uh, mentioned hate mongrels who look exactly like other normal white men and women. You know, what, what is this? I, I suddenly see the author, you know, weaving his magic with his words to explain away this vicious mob that is out for blood on these nine students, and poor Elizabeth's caught in the middle, and the words that he's using are minimizing the situation. You got a very grave situation going on here. I mean, at any time, you know, this crowd could be excited into some type of action. Because we learned from, uh, the previous book study, that, uh, some, some of them had a lynch rope, and they're shouting, they're shouting all of these racial epithets, you know, which the author is minimizing too. You know, just Hazel just hamming it up, and, uh, you know, Hazel is a, is a vital part of keeping this, uh, tension to a pitch here. And the part about, uh, John Haberstadt, or Haberstadt, I looked him up, he was a Pulitzer Prize-winning author, journalist, and historian. And it, it seems hard to believe that, you know, he would be surprised about the reaction that he's getting in his country, so to speak. I call it his racist country, he should have known all about that. I reserve some of my comments. I, I really want to mention, uh, Elsie Bates showing up to assist, uh, Elizabeth doing all of this. He had a gun with him. Okay, I don't know about the rest of the caller, but it seems like if you are a young fighting student, you're in the middle of a mob, a black person shows up to help you out, officer, he's got a gun, ah, I don't know, but it seems like that would be a little comforting to me, that maybe this guy can get me out of here, and I think I would have went with him. But that wasn't Elizabeth's reaction, she didn't want anything to do with Mr. Elsie Bates. But at the same time, when Benjamin Fine shows up, he was able to put his arms around her and comfort her. You know, and, uh, before I mute my line and give someone else a chance, then you can go back to thinking about Frederick Douglass, what, you know, that original quote that you mentioned at the beginning of the show. Frederick Douglass, my interest in any man is objectively uninfluenced by emotions or personal prejudice in his manhood, and subjectively, which is personal perspective, feelings, beliefs, and desires, in my own manhood. It's almost like, you know, we as non-white people have just the opposite view of the way that we're supposed way that we're supposed to be thinking about this situation. I'll mute my line. Thank you, guys, taking my call.
Appreciated the feedback, absolutely. Um, if other folks are interested, just press star six if you're on the line and you, if you, uh, are interested in sharing, I'll give out the number again a little later. Um, I guess one point with the point about Elsie Bates, and I think they mentioned it, uh, or I think last week in the audio segment, I think they mentioned where Elizabeth Eckford's mother didn't or had concerns about her being around men, older males, and the author suggested, you know, uh, maybe her mom had been molested, I remember we talked about, uh, or just it was brought up last week, uh, how prevalent that is. Um, so I think that may have been an issue, I might be wrong, uh, but I know that has been brought up before in the book about Elizabeth Eckford being around, uh, older males. Uh, and I think also, just in terms of would that make a fifteen-year-old child, would that make them feel safe in that environment? Cause I'm sure there had to be tons of white people who had, I mean, clearly they were, the National Guard was there, but I mean, some of the mob terrorist white people that were present, I'm sure many of them had guns too. Uh, and I'm sure she had to be thinking, this one black male with a gun, if things get really bad, is not gonna be able to stand up to all of the probably armed white people that are present, not including the National Guard. Um, so I could see how that might have even, as opposed to her thinking safety, might have even made her think, think, oh my gosh, you know, let me get away from this crazy flag too. This could really, uh, this could really go bad. I, not that I disagree with what you're saying, I just, I could see how, uh, a fifteen-year-old confused victim of racism, or even not confused, I could see how they could do the logic in saying, wow, this might not be safe either, something could go bad where this black guy's got a gun and I wanna get, I just wanna get out of here, I wanna get away from him and everybody else, I just wanna get out of here, um, to safety. Um, and like you were saying to, uh, Benjamin Fine, the white reporter, uh, that's just, you know, that's, that is what domination looks like, where this white person, even without a gun, unfortunately, that's just the way that we've been trained, and it might even be true, the white person might be, uh, the one who can get through that crowd, like that white woman going through there and, and yelling at those folks and telling them, you know, I, you know, a, a black person couldn't do that. That's just racism, white supremacy, a black person, you would have had at least one lynching that day, maybe many, if a black person, even if one of their parents had, had attempted to do something like that, that's just, that's the power of racism, white supremacy. So I could see how, I could see how that sort of thing could happen, where she rejects Elsie Bates and accepts the comfort or assistance from Benjamin Fine and even, uh, Grace Dorch, the white woman who kinda helped get her to the, to the bus, if that makes sense.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, that puts, sheds a new light on the subject, I mean, that makes perfect sense. I mean, actually, it, it, it really sounds like that's probably the way that it was. But, you know, not bashing the victim, but I also saw some contrast between the way, the feelings and the way that she expressed herself to Mrs. Bates when she finally met her or was, uh, brought over to her house, uh, opposed to the way that she, uh, accepted the Reverend Cartwright, you know, holding his hand and saying, you know, some of this the author may have made up because, you know, she's getting on Mrs. Bates and then she's holding Reverend Cartwright's hand saying, oh, well, it's only some of the white people. You know, that's kinda, that's a little bit hard to believe though. What do you think about that?
I think, uh, uh, when the part of her, uh, getting at Ms. Bates, um, I think that is certainly plausible, uh, that could have been made. I think that's definitely plausible that that could have been, uh, made up. I also could see where if some form of neglect or whatever happened, if she got tired, somehow the information wasn't passed to me and I got stuck out there in that mob by myself, I could definitely see how there could be some, uh, animosity about all of that, um, particularly at that, at that moment, I could see how that could be possible as well. Uh, in terms of the treatment of the white, uh, preacher, I feel like I've, I, that's not hard for me to believe at all, like, I've seen that in my life, like, uh, particularly if it's a pastor, but just any old white person who comes by and they are acknowledging the terrorism that we experience and saying, and saying, oh, it's terrible, oh, it's bad, uh, you know, it's, it's shameful the way that we behave today, I'm ashamed as a white, I mean, I have seen, whether it's Timothy Wise, some of the other white people that we've had on our program, I've seen that live and in person in two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, two thousand thirteen, so it's not difficult for me to believe that at all, that, again, it's just the, that's what domination looks like, that is the overwhelming power of the system.
Yes, speaking about what domination looks like, these, uh, white people that do attempt to aid and help Elizabeth, I noted that there's gonna be a serious consequence for aiding And the book states, uh, someone, I think, oh, he was talking about the lodges, because Lee believed in principles of decency and justice and equality of all men, that he and his family was hounded through four states and treated like refugees. But then again, this whole thing is, uh, I think it was Princess before, one of the female caller, said, white people create these situations and then they turn around and come to the rescue. So I'm not sure what to make of Lee and Grace, but if they were hounded four states, he lost jobs, she was hauled in front of a Senate Internal Security Subcommittee, it seemed like some serious consequence. Hey, and what about the part where, okay, they practicing racism out here? I mean, they're really getting after a non-white person. All of a sudden, a call to callers, the music come on, everybody stop, what do they do? Put their hands over their heart, turn towards the flag. As soon as the music stops, they go back to practicing racism again, it's, I don't know what to make of it.
I was thinking it would have, uh, it, it would have only been better if they had stopped and played Dixie, um, and they did their salute or sung along or whatever, and then went right back to terrorizing black people. Um, that would have been, uh, that would have been the best. Um, yeah, I'm looking, cause a lot of this is foot, if people have the book, uh, and they are following along as they read, a lot of this has footnotes, so the part I'm looking here, where he's talking about Reverend Cartwright to see if this section is footnoted, and if so, where he's getting this information from about what she said to him, um, cause I highlighted that where she says, uh, no, it's not all white people, where this, this white reverend comes by and tells her he's ashamed to be a white person, uh, and then he says, uh, then she says, no, it's just some of the white people who have stirred things up, uh, and how he quoted that in his sermon. But this part right here is not, uh, I don't see the footnotes, I don't see where he's getting this information from. Uh, yeah, they don't, they're no footnotes. That's interesting, I know he, uh, he comments that he got some of this from, uh, I guess Mr. Cartwright did some sort of write-up or biography that was not published, um, maybe he got some of the material from that. Uh, yeah, I'm checking through. Unpub, yeah, okay, so apparently he wrote something that wasn't published, and then I'm also looking to see where the information about what, what Elizabeth Eckford said to Ms. Bates when she's upset, and why'd you forget us? I'm looking to see if, if that's there. There's no footnote for that either. Hmm. Yeah, I don't know what to say about that, there's no footnote, like, uh, be curious as to where, where he got that information from, maybe, I don't know, it would be great to talk to, uh, to some of the, the Little Rock Nine to see if they've read this book, uh, have they checked out some of what white people are saying about them, to see what they think about this. I know the, the segment that I started the program with today, that lecture, Elizabeth Eckford is in the audience, and he says that she read the book, checked it, gave her feedback and all that, checked it for accuracies, so she, uh, I guess is at least signing off that it's, that it's accurate, what's in the book, and he said he interviewed her many times, so it could have been that she told him this, but, uh, I would like to see a footnote. Uh, the caller that dialed in from a blocked number, your line should be open as well. Person that called from a blocked number. Okay, there was someone that dialed in, uh, I think from a blocked number, uh, you have a hand up, your line is open, but we're not hearing you, if you hit your mute button, might wanna check that if, uh, if you.
Oh, yes, hi. Um, I was just, uh, wanted to say, I thought it was, um, interesting, I think it said something about, um, the church would be no help, um, I think it mentioned something about the church and the church wouldn't help, so I thought that was just funny, I just keep, um, thinking that the church was supposed to be of some help, um, thinking the church is supposed to have some sort of a Moses or Savior type thing to help people in trouble, so I just wanted to add that comment. And that's all.
Hang on, hang on. Yeah, the, uh, they, they went to school with ministers, the members of Little, not Elizabeth Eckford, but the other members, when they attempted to enter the first day and got turned back by the National Guard, they had, uh, black and white ministers, uh, accompanying them, and, uh, they seemed quite impotent, uh, you brought ministers and they've got armed National Guardsmen, uh, outside the school to keep you out, and then white people, a white mob outside with who knows what, uh, ropes, probably guns and, and whatever else, uh, that they have. Um, yeah, it's, it's a quite, quite an impotent spectacle in my opinion, um. Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, excuse me, uh, the book identifies segregationists and integrationist preachers. So I found that very interesting, preachers from both sides. Now, if this is a religious organization, it seems like it's only one right side, why would there be a segregationist preacher? Oh, and one segregationist preacher, uh, made a statement that a praying knee and a dancing foot don't grow on the same leg? That must be an example of a segregationist preacher.
Hmm. Yep, they did know, I think that was in the section where they were quoting some of the many, uh, it seemed many white people who, uh, were allegedly disgusted, uh, about this, this picture, uh, with Elizabeth Eckford being heckled by Hazel and these other white people, um, where they go through and they have many people, uh, the one white person who said, uh, hey, you know, I, I don't, I have no interest in my children being in school with negroes, niggers, but, uh, I, I don't think they treated this little black girl right, uh, and having that quote in, I think they had quite a few, uh, who expressed their displeasure, uh, with this photograph, uh, but again, I said, I think that's pretty consistent, where these individuals are not being identified, classified as racist, um, they are being, that's the term segregationist that was used a lot in Warriors Don't Cry, but I feel like it's a lot of just with the language, uh, people not being held accountable, even some of what we heard yesterday, where people who do all of these criminal terrorist activities, and then they're not identified. We gotta be going through, jumping through all these hoops, making up names and synonyms for folks, so we can conceal their identities so that their great-great-grandchildren won't be embarrassed about their racist conduct from forty, fifty, sixty years ago.
Wait a minute, I, I have a good, uh, section here. When Elizabeth's father got word of this, it angered him, so he goes with his thirty-eight caliber gun, had all but three bullets, he takes off central, goes around about to get there, probably going by way of his friends out, hoping they talk him out of it, getting there in the first place. What, uh, I mean, I can understand him being angry, but can you imagine in the midst of an angry mob with an old thirty-eight caliber pistol with three bullets? Man, was he in for rude awakening.
That is the truth. Uh, we had another person that dialed in from a blocked number, your line should be open as well.
Yeah, um, I was just calling, um, cause I was, um, I was thinking about how that one of the reporters said how the whole crowd was immaculate and, um, except for Elizabeth in there, and, um, they, he talks like the other bystanders that were on opposing sides of Hazel were just being calm and, and stuff, like, you know, like, they weren't a threat, and that one white boy, you know, he just laughing, like, you know, it's no big deal, you know, I went to business school with negroes and, and, um, another thing I wanna talk about, which this was about yesterday with that guy, uh, yesterday, um, there, there's this book that talks about, talks a lot about that, it's called The Warmth of Other Suns, I don't know if you've heard of it, uh, by this black woman named Isabel Wilkerson, it just came out last year, and she talks about the great migration of four different black people from four different states, come, uh, and their experiences coming from the South and to the Midwest and the, and the North, and one of the guys is from Florida, and, um, he talks about how, uh, him and some of the other black guys who were fruit pickers, and he arranged, um, uh, what you call it, um, I forgot, um, a group of them to strike, uh, because the, the pick, the, the guys that, that were hiring them weren't paying them enough, and, uh, some of the, some of the black guys, they were scared and everything, and, and they was all prepared, I mean, the others, they were all prepared to do that, but one of the black guys got scared, and he went and told one of the white people, and the white people was coming after them, was gonna lynch him, and that particular black guy, he just barely made it out of the state, and he was talking about how Florida was the most racist state, and some of his friends got lynched and stuff like that. I know this is kinda off to the subject, but I, I just wanna piggyback on that yesterday, and I just thought that that might be an interesting book to read, and this, and this book is written by a black person, and she was on C-SPAN about several months ago, and she was talking about it.
Oh, hold on, we will investigate Elizabeth Wilkerson?
Yeah, no, it's Isabel.
Isabel.
Yeah, and it's the name, the name of the book is The Warmth of Other Suns.
Got it, okay, Isabel Wilkerson, Isabel Wilkerson, okay. Good stuff.
I'll mute my line.
Um, yeah, I'm just looking at some of the wording here, um, you got about twenty minutes left, so if there are the folks who wanna participate before we get to the second clip, got about twenty minutes, maybe a little less, feel free to, uh, chime in, star six if you're on the line, I'll give out the number in a moment. Uh, but the passage where Margolick, he's talking about this photograph, and he says, "No apologies would ever be demanded or expected from anyone else in Will Count's photograph. In the universe he had created, if nowhere else, Hazel was every bit as alone as..." In the universe he had created, if nowhere else, Hazel was every bit as alone as Elizabeth." And just in my view, that sort of comparison where they're almost in the same spot. They're both in such a difficult situation, no friends, no support. Poor Hazel, forever vilified in this, this one photograph as the lead racist. Uh, in my opinion, that sort of, uh, wording, language to elicit sympathy for someone who is participating in terrorist behavior, uh, that Frederick Douglass quote. And in fact, he talks about this, where he in, in, it's in, I think it's in the same lecture that I played a snippet from today, where he's saying that he didn't want to look back and judge these people and, uh, hurl insults at them and, and take shots at them some thirty, forty, fifty years later. I said, wow, we don't take that stance, or I'll be specific, white people don't take that stance when they're talking about any other criminal activity. If they're talking about Bin Laden ten years ago, today, they do so and nobody, you know, feels like they need to lie and say, "I'm withholding judgment." I mean, hey, we're all people and we all do bad things. I'm not gonna look down on what he did. If they're talking about Jerry Sandusky, if they're talking about Jimmy Savile, uh, if they're talking about people who killed folks, Charles Manson, even a long time ago, generally, white people do not withhold judgment. It's only when we start talking about racism, white supremacy, oh, wait a minute now, maybe we shouldn't give out the names of the people who did these things, uh, in nineteen fifty. Maybe we should, you know, not look back and judge them according to current day standard. It's only then do we not want to really light label accurately these people as terrorists and condemn what it is that they did. And I see this in the language and the way that, that Hazel is being talked about. I think we talked about this last week as well. Let's see, did you all, uh, did you all catch the part where they had been talking about Grace Lorch, Lee Lorch, uh, these white people, uh, so one, I think they said Lee Lorch, so-called communist, uh, that they went out to help Elizabeth Eckford? Did you all catch the part where they, uh, Mr. Lorch, I think he had been complaining and saying that Thurgood Marshall had been out poisoning minds against them? Did you all catch that part?
Yeah, I caught it. Yeah, I, I remember him saying that.
Yeah, that, to me, was significant, just given that time, uh, the fact that it was all, I mean, you're already seeing the difficulties that just being a black person that you have. And then they have white people who are coming along who, white people, other white people have identified as troublemakers. To me, that would make perfect sense to say, hey, other white people even identify these folks as troublemakers. You definitely want to steer clear of them, uh, even if they're coming to offer help. I, I mean, to me, that sounds totally logical. Uh, these are folks that are just gonna get you in more hot water.
Yes, how about the, uh, NAACP distancing themselves from their Lorches because they were associated with the communists? And during that period of time, there was such thing as he mentioned, uh, red baiting. If you got labeled as a communist, you really had hell to pay back during that time.
Paul Robeson. Um, yeah, even that, uh, stands out. I would, well, number one, just a quickie, Mr. Fuller told me about this book, uh, and it's great, I had an opportunity to read it, uh, about a month or so ago. Uh, it's actually an essay that Richard Wright wrote. Uh, it's in the book, The God That Failed. Uh, it's about his experience with white communists in Chicago during the nineteen thirties after he had migrated from Mississippi. Real interesting, him thinking that these were good, not racist white people, cause they were communists. And he talks about his experience, real interesting. Richard Wright, The God That Failed. Anywho, um, even the, the words that they use around that, like I was painting the red baiting, uh, that when they go to attack you for being a quote unquote communist, they use language that implies that you have somehow infringed upon being a white person, like saying that you are red baiting, they give a non-white color to attach, to attack you with. Uh, it's just, I think it's, it's in, uh, it's in the language that they use. In fact, I think later on in the book, they, uh, they quoted someone, they said that, uh, one of the quote unquote segregationists, he said, "Desegregation is a red plot." Still using color-coded words and language to phrase how they talk about this. I think that's important as well. Yeah, in the same vein, I think, I remember the, uh, when, uh, Grace Lorch, when she was out trying to quote unquote help Elizabeth, uh, I think one of the white people that was fussing at her told her to, uh, at least act like she was white. And I thought that right there revealed a lot in terms of saying, that's a very important question, what does it mean to be a white person? Someone telling this white woman, at least act like you are a white person. I thought that was significant as well.
Yeah, what, what part of the book was that in? Was that, uh, when Ms. Lorch was with Elizabeth before she got on the bus?
Let's see, I am looking to give, you're talking about the part where they tell her to at least act like she's a white person?
Yes.
Let's see. If you give me one moment, I'll nab it down. Definitely in chapter eight, though.
And I, I can't see the significance of the Lorches trying, they were petition, petitioning to enroll their daughter in an all-black public school? I mean, like you said, some of this should have been, uh, footnoted so that the references could have been looked up because, I mean, you're making the point that these people are somewhat different and they're willing to help. But I mean, you're kind of going a little overboard when you're looking for a school, an all-black school to put your daughter in, what, what they hope to accomplish with
I thought that was a great point, too, uh, them making a bit like this is something that black people should think, oh, wow, that's incredible, they were trying to get their child enrolled at a black school. That's incredible. I was thinking the same thing, um, yeah, in terms of how black people should, what I should think about that. Um, yeah, that's something that is gonna be a benefit to, to black people, victims I wish it also, I wish they had went into detail, um, just for the record to be specific about who prohibited them from enrolling their children in a black school, just to come out and, and make sure that, you know, they're being clear and saying that it was other white people, more powerful white people who told them that they couldn't enroll their children in those schools, cause I'm pretty sure it wasn't, uh, black people, uh, who had that ability to prohibit them from entering the school.
I-
Oh, go ahead.
I found the part, uh, she was, uh, being called the nigger lover and a Yankee and she was asking someone to call a taxi. She was looking to, uh, use the telephone, I guess, at some of the drugstores, when someone told her to go back to New York or at least act like a white person. Yeah, I found it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it took, I just located it about a second, I think about the same time that she found it. Um, yeah, to me, that just, that says a lot. Just that one statement right there reveals a ton of information about what it means to be a white person, how you're supposed to relate to non-white people at all time. I mean, that's not, in my view, that's not country-specific, that's not century-specific. You just know what that means. Uh, you act like a white person, get it together, man. You just, you're supposed to know what that means at a very young age. Any other points, folks, wanna make sure they, uh, have a chance to get to before we get to the second audio segment? Any other points?
I, well, I just wanted to say that I think Hazel is looking to gain the spotlight. Uh, even back then, you know, she was going to, uh, the Steve show and she was running off at the mouth doing interviews with the reporters until I guess Steve put an end to it, or the people, his promoters restricting the, uh, news reporters from interviewing the students. But she was, uh, I guess you would call that grandstanding.
To me, I, that, just the language that's written to describe her and just saying, oh, well, she was fifteen and we shouldn't be judging her as though she was some rabid, racist, thirty-year-old woman who came out to attack and jeer these young children. Uh, fine. And even, I think he has a sentence where, uh, I think I highlighted this one, so it should be a little easier for me to find it, where he talks about this photograph, uh, just the lighting and, uh, it's such a poignant moment to capture that on film where he says it, it almost looks ordained. And in my view, it is. These are the sort of environments, these are the sort of events that the system of white supremacy is designed to produce. It's easy to get this sort of response where you end up having a lot of racists coordinated and focused in the abuse, mistreatment of non-white people. It happens all the time. That's why you still have incidents like this happening even today, two thousand thirteen. It is ordained, even though it's not specific to this individual white person, like it doesn't, it wouldn't necessarily have to be Hazel, it could have been anybody. And I'm sure if you went and took photographs at other moments during this riot, you could have produced probably a hundred, maybe even more than that, maybe hundreds of photographs that look very similar to this, where maybe it wouldn't have been Elizabeth, maybe it would have been Melba Patilla Beals, or Ernest Green, or Kalata Walls-Lanier, one of the other nine. Uh, these sorts of things are supposed to happen under racist white supremacists, it's under the system. It's the same logic that the paper used. We don't really need her name. This is, she's just another white person in a crowd of racists. Who cares what her name is, really? And I think that's, I mean, it makes perfect sense, not in taking these people off the hook, but just being truthful about what the system is designed to produce. And even if you do have somebody like a Grace Lorch or one of these white people, Reverend Cartwright, uh, who alleged that they're trying to help, as Dr. Cambon says, these folks are statistically insignificant. These were not white people who had any power to make things done. These were not the white people who had the ability to provide security, armed, adequate security for any of the black people involved. These few straggler white people were harmed and mistreated, uh, and told to get in line, act like you're a white person, get in line and you're gonna pay the price too, nigger lover. And then I feel like unless we're being completely honest about that, uh, if it's a white person, they are just continuing the practice of racism, white supremacy and adding to the confusion. If it's a non-white person, that's a part of their victimization, that's a part of just how we've all been conditioned to let white people off the hook, defend them and not call them out on their culpability, their practice of white supremacy. Uh, any other comments? Got a few minutes left, any other comments?
Um, yes, um, I'm just learning about this thing called the code and, um, I'm just realizing that, um, there are codes that, uh, people have to follow. Um, and I guess you're supposed to follow along or you're gonna stand out if you don't follow the code. You're gonna stand out like a sore thumb and, um, there may be consequences. So it's, it's just interesting how, um, I guess, as we should say, I guess, the white people, or, um, you know, how they're focused on, um, obeying the code. And if you don't obey the code, there are consequences. So, and, uh, you know, they have this thing very organized and, um, if you're in a situation and you need to prove something, it's very hard to get evidence, um, that you're being, you know, tormented, um, they make it very difficult to prove anything. And, um, you know, they're very smart with it, so, yeah. Well, this thing called the code is very interesting. I'm kind of learning about it. That's all.
Learning myself, learning myself. Go ahead.
That is an excellent point. Uh, I wanted to add that the book Mitch Menarche counts and it had a footnote attached to that. And she was another fifteen-year-old girl that went through, I guess, the same thing in Charlotte, North Carolina. And then, which leads you to believe that it was probably hundreds and maybe even thousands of the same incident happening all over the United States during that period of time. I mean, just because we don't have, uh, actual written reports of it, you can come to that conclusion if there's a code. And then there was an attempt in every school, there had to be at least one person that was attempting to be the third to integrate that particular school. So may not have been as serious a backlash, but there was some type of resistance. Thousands of the same thing.
Absolutely. Medgar Evers, uh, if you need documentation. And that just further makes, uh, the point that I was touching on before about, you know, it's, it's really no point in trying to minimize or absolve Hazel or any of these white people. So, oh, they were fourteen, or, oh, they just got caught up in the, I mean, this is one of many, uh, not just that day, but the whole year of terrorism they experienced. But Medgar Evers, Mississippi, with just one black person, and you have the same thing where they have to call in the National Guard, where they are killing white people over one black person going to school, uh, in the state of Virginia, where they closed the schools down. Uh, where they also have a documentary where it has similar footage, just a handful of black students trying to go to school, same thing, mob of white people outside, ready for blood, uh, as a result of this. Same thing happened in, uh, Mississippi with their high school as well, where they also closed the schools down for a year. Uh, exactly as the caller just said, this thing played out over and over again. That's what racism, white supremacy is all about. Uh, and as the female caller touched on, it is codified. Uh, we talked about that yesterday. There is a code that white people are following. It has room for improvisation, but there are definitely boundaries and there are consequences for violating the white code. The white rulebook came up yesterday, the white people who helped out the black people in Rosewood, consequences, consequences. We will never forget and you will be reminded about that and picked on for the rest of your life, uh, from white people. And we've heard that before repeatedly in other incidents. Uh, we will go ahead and get to the second audio segment. If you didn't get to participate, if you had something you wanted to share, just remember it, write it down, and we'll make sure we have time, uh, for ample dialogue after the second audio segment concludes. Again, this is racist- Uh, again, this is racist suspect David Margolick, Elizabeth and Hazel. I believe, uh, we should be starting off with chapter eleven.
Two days after Johnny Jenkins's picture of Elizabeth and Hazel ran in the Gazette, it appeared again, though in a very different guise. This time, it wasn't featured on the front page, but on the lower right-hand corner of page four A. It was set off from the news columns by a couple of thin lines and labeled "advertisement." "If you live in Arkansas," it read above the photograph. Only after the eyes had taken in the two schoolgirls came the rest of the sentence, delivered in bigger boulder type. "Study this picture and no shame." "When hate is unleashed and bigotry finds a voice, God help us all," the text continued. Below that, almost as an afterthought, came a bit of information. "advertisement paid for by Davis Fitzhugh, Route One, Augusta, Arkansas." Who was David Fitzhugh, and why had he taken it upon himself, at his own expense, to convey such a message, one that could subject him to harm or harassment, and which at the very least, few people would've wanted to hear? Readers of the Gazette weren't told very much about him in a news article nearby, only that he owned a fifteen-hundred-acre cotton and rice farm three miles north of Augusta, had been mayor of the town, and was the brother of the man who had helped bring public electricity to Arkansas. Only out-of-towners were curious enough to ask more. "I'm not a carpetbagger, a Yankee, or a communist, but I'm in favor of a humane attitude toward other human beings," Fitzhugh told The Daily Worker, presumably by telephone. No one actually bothered tracking Fitzhugh down until Harold Isaacs of MIT, seeking to learn how the Cold War was affecting American race relations, as well as to understand why some people rose to historical challenges while others failed, came to town. It's unclear how Isaacs, who was probably in Boston when it appeared, even knew of the advertisement, but arriving in Little Rock two months later, he promptly contacted Fitzhugh, who invited him to Augusta, a small town, oddly enough where Hazel's mother had been born, seventy-five miles to the northeast. Fitzhugh, a stocky man of mid-forties, with eyes large behind thick glasses, thin gray hair, dressed as for a Sunday of leisure, met Isaacs on the outskirts of town, then led him to his home, a place, Isaacs noted, "with books that looked used." Isaacs, who had written for Newsweek before going into academia, got down to business quickly. "I said I had come out to discover what had made him put that ad in the paper," Isaacs later wrote. "The picture demanded reflection," Fitzhugh explained, "because it captured a catastrophe. 'I thought fifty years of progress had been destroyed in one afternoon,' he said. 'What progress?' Progress in allowing a Negro person a sense of dignity, progress in a lack of bitterness, a kind of negative progress against using the word nigger. And economic progress, progress in the schools, not much, but some. 'I thought things like this could happen in Georgia perhaps, but not here. It amazed me.'" As the events in Little Rock unfolded, he said, he assumed some white people, at least those white people who appeased their consciences through paternalism by informally looking out for one or two black families, would speak up. But no one had come forward, so he had. The picture appeared on a Friday morning. By that afternoon, he was on the phone buying an ad for the Sunday paper. Fitzhugh's family was prominent locally, the small town of Fitzhugh, named after his relatives, was only a few miles from Augusta, and, thanks to his late brother, known even in Little Rock, that, plus its relatively progressive politics, may have explained why the Gazette even accepted such an ad. Fitzhugh, it turned out, was not your typical Southerner. His mother had studied at the Sorbonne and campaigned for women's suffrage and birth control. He'd gone to high school in Chicago, met his wife in Chile, and studied short story writing at Columbia, where he'd had several black classmates. During World War II, he had enlisted while mayor. He had first commanded a company of black soldiers in Texas, then helped re-establish local governments in newly liberated German towns. It was that experience that helped prompt his ad. "I tried to find out from people how they could stand by and see Jews persecuted and murdered," he explained. They'd say they felt guilty, but didn't know what they could do, that it was dangerous to do anything. "This is something like the feeling I feel here now, something of the same evil spirit, the same inability to act. It almost seems ridiculous to think that this could be, here. Yet it is, and I ask myself, what do you do? What do you do next? What do we all do next?" Local reaction to Fitzhugh's gesture fell into what for Isaacs had become a recurrent pattern throughout the Little Rock story, politely not noticing the unpleasant. "It was," Isaacs wrote, "as if Fitzhugh had committed some act of indecent exposure outside the church on a Sunday at noon. 'Ninety percent of his friends simply ignored the ad,' said Fitzhugh, whose farm had both white and black tenants, living in houses with running water, electricity, even television sets. 'They chalked it up to his eccentricity. They see me as a turncoat, I think, but they'd never say so to me,' he said. 'Some pool hall elements in town cussed me out on the street, but wouldn't stop and talk when I tried to do so. The few who complimented him looked around first, or took him from behind something before doing so. Only the preacher's wife had praised him openly, actually to Fitzhugh's wife, interrupting her bridge game. The three other women at the table kept playing, saying nothing. Fitzhugh said he had received about a hundred and fifty letters, only three or four of them hostile. Many congratulated him for his religious spirit, though the ad, he confessed, made him sound more religious than he really was. 'I'm not much for the church,' he explained. The Democrats' letters page carried no reaction to Count's picture, either because its readers didn't care, or because the editors spacked them. But the Gazette had plenty of comments about Jenkins's version of it. "If Governor Faubus, as he claims, called on the National Guard to protect the peace in this state, went one, why did the National Guard not protect this innocent girl from these savages? 'The picture signifies one of the most disgraceful and uncivilized acts that has ever occurred in Arkansas,' stated another. 'It reminds me of the howling mob that crucified Christ. With a little egging, I think they might've crucified that girl,' went a third. Signed, Patient, State Sanitarium.'" Readers elsewhere also reacted. "The picture in the newspapers of that poor girl, holding her head high and brave while being followed and spat upon and called ugly names by supposed Americans, reminded me of Nathan Hale, and I cried," Lewis Gertzog wrote to the New York Post, which gave readers a post office box to which they could send Elizabeth words of encouragement. Checks flooded into the NAACP. One from a Cincinnati woman included a copy of something she had written to Elizabeth. "It was after a harrowing day that I walked to the TV, and then, Elizabeth, I saw you, a fifteen-year-old girl, walk past a shouting, jeering mob to enter a school you had every right to enter. How many of that ugly-faced mob would've had the same courage? By that supreme act of courage, you have done something that no double-talking politician can do. You have made the people of America take sides." In the black press, still influential, though far less luminous than it had once been now that the journalistic mainstream had finally begun picking off some of its talent, the image also reverberated. To Moses Newsen of the Baltimore Afro-American, the photograph had the same galvanizing impact on black Americans as the photograph of Emmett Till two years earlier. "A girl without a country," the Bateses called Elizabeth in the state press. Such an experience, they predicted, would mark her in a way that only death will erase. "Arkansas hate, fifteen-year-old girl is heroine of Dixie strife," declared the St. Louis Argus. "Don't you protect colored children too?" An Elizabeth-like figure standing alongside a giant pair of army boots labeled "Governor Faubus's Guard" asked in a cartoon in the Afro-American. Jett predicted that Elizabeth would be inscribed in the same Book of Heroes as Martin Luther King Jr. "If the scales of history are in correct adjustment at all, a century from now, in 2057, it will take a thousand Eisenhowers and a million Secretary of State John Foster Dulles to weigh as much in historical value as the one lone little Negro girl in Little Rock," Langston Hughes predicted in the Chicago Defender. "The picture ought to be framed and hung up in every Negro home as a reminder to all to stand up more vigorously for their rights," urged J.A. Rogers in the Pittsburgh Courier. "Surely her example ought to touch the hearts of even some hostile whites, and make in the years to come some of those who spat at her and shouted contemptuous names be ashamed of themselves." Attention and commentary came from abroad as well. "One girl runs gantlet of hate," shouted a headline in the Daily Express in London. The Arkansas Gazette marveled at how the events had united in their outrage, the newspapers of the Vatican, the Kremlin, and a country whose leader had snubbed Jesse Owens only twenty years earlier. The story and picture led off the Little Rock coverage in Paris Match. "The bowed head of Elizabeth Eckford had become perfectly familiar to the French by name, identity, and meaning," the New Yorker's Janet Flanner wrote in her Paris Journal. Of course, what was interesting about that head was that it was, in fact, un-bowed. Not surprisingly, Soviet Russia relished the black eye the photograph gave its Cold War rival. For the USSR, Little Rock epitomized America's racial shame, and Elizabeth Eckford epitomized Little Rock. Apparently, the truth wasn't awful enough. Depicting Elizabeth walking to school for a broadcast to Soviet schoolrooms, Radio Moscow embellished things a bit. "She stopped in fright, dropped her satchel with her books, and felt her hair standing on end," the broadcast went. "A corpse hanging from a lamppost swung to and fro in the wind. On its chest was a board with the inscription, 'This will happen to all who dare to sit on a schoolbench next to a white person.'" The Afro-American's correspondent in Ethiopia reported that Russians in Addis Ababa rubbed their hands in great glee and drank big gulps of vodka over their apparently newfound allies in Arkansas. A Baptist clergyman in Little Rock showed Harold Isaacs the many clippings with their embarrassing photographs he'd received from missionaries in the Philippines, Ghana, Nigeria, and Argentina. Chapter twelve. Officially, the NAACP discouraged what its executive secretary Roy Wilkins called "sideshow and exhibitions involving Elizabeth or the other black students." Their education, that is, once it resumed, was to come first. But Elizabeth was produced to select reporters, who made their way to the Eckford home, which they tended to describe as some variant of blank but blank. Ted Poston's "spic and span but much used" was typical. "She knew that going to Central wouldn't be easy," Elizabeth told Walter Lister of the New York Herald Tribune, "but her pastor had urged her once to take advantage of every opportunity. 'I believe in being independent,' she said. 'I don't like to wait for somebody else.'" A picture of her, book in hand and pencil at the ready, appeared alongside the story on the front page. "It helps to know we have such support," Elizabeth, her lips in a trembling smile, told Virginia Gardner of The Daily Worker. Elizabeth was slighter than Gardner had anticipated, and her hands felt tiny. "She was terribly upset for a while, but she is pulling out of it," her step-grandmother told Gardner. Al Knoll of the New York Amsterdam News asked the cute little lass what people had shouted at her. "I wouldn't want to repeat those words," Elizabeth replied. "Some of them I never heard before, but I don't like them." So, in awe of Elizabeth was Moses Newsen of the Afro-American, that sometimes he stopped taking notes while interviewing her, the better to contemplate her courage. Her voice quiet and muffled, Elizabeth often had to repeat what she'd just said. To spare herself that, she cultivated a precise, articulate speaking style she was never to lose. "Elizabeth Ann Eckford, fifteen, is the most sensitive of the children," a New York Post reporter wrote. "She's pensive, the kind of person who loves deeply and can be hurt deeply." Elizabeth quickly wearied of all these reporters, however sympathetic they might be. "I wish they could get together and have one press conference and get it over with," she complained. The others in the nine teased her that she should charge for interviews. Seeking to protect her, Daisy Bates told the press that she had sent Elizabeth out of town for the weekend, and rumors flew that the girl had gone to San Francisco for a speaking engagement. The St. Louis Argus reported "particular spirited bidding for such appearances." But of course, that was quite impossible. Even now, Birdie Eckford would have never let her leave home. Virginia Gardner asked Birdie how she had prepared Elizabeth for desegregation, only to realize that that is what Negro mothers in the South have been doing for generations. To the Associated Press, Elizabeth's mother was calm and sanguine. Did she believe school integration would lead to socially awkward situations? "See that vacant lot across the street?" she replied. "Negro and white children play ball there, and they get along fine." Long-distance telephone calls for Elizabeth came into her grandfather's store from Chicago, Detroit, New York, even Oklahoma. Though all the nine got letters, usually sent via Daisy Bates, Elizabeth got far and away the most, as many as fifty a day. Things got so lopsided that Bates, who'd publicly called Elizabeth "the star of the show," privately urged NAACP branch presidents to send messages to the other eight. When the Today Show devoted a program to the events in Little Rock, it felt compelled to ask for anyone but Elizabeth. One letter, from a sixteen-year-old in Japan, was addressed simply to "Miss Elizabeth Eckford, Little Rock, USA." Another from New Zealand arrived with just her name and the picture. So much mail came from Germany that a schoolmate of German descent was recruited to translate it for her. Elizabeth, characteristically, hoped for letters from France so that she could work on her French. An Englishman living in Zurich sent her a hundred dollars. She saved everything she received, putting it all in a cardboard box. Only from Arkansas, there was no mail. Detractors would've been too ashamed, and supporters, perhaps too fearful. But a few sympathetic whites left cash for her at her grandfather's store, and on her sixteenth birthday in early October, a white man whose name Elizabeth never learned stopped by her home with a Gerard Perregaux watch belonging to his dying wife. Elizabeth used it for many years. Not every gesture was so positive. Someone threw a brick through the window of Eckford's confectionery, and the filling station where her father bought gas for his truck cut off his credit. Faubus, too, received an enormous amount of mail. Many of his correspondents praised him, but several who didn't enclosed a picture of Elizabeth for emphasis. "It is with real shock that I see the face of an otherwise beautiful girl distorted by arrogant hatred as in the enclosed picture. The serene dignity displayed by the Negro girl whom the white girl is jeering is mute evidence of where real Christian virtue and superiority reside," stated Josephine Goman of Detroit. "What ugly white women you have in Little Rock," Adelaide Forbush wrote from Los Angeles, "the Negro girl shows much more dignity and courage." Penny Rover of Chicago proposed a monument in Elizabeth's honor. Several sided scripture. "I also saw the picture of the colored girl leaving the school by order of the guard, walking alone," went one, "reminded me of the picture of Christ, he too walked alone on his trip to Gethsemane." "It is a sad commentary for the leadership of Arkansas when a fourteen-year-old Negro child has more dignity and courage than the governor of Arkansas," wrote a man named Raymond Burks. Because she'd rarely been identified by name, Hazel got little mail. A few letters, all from the North, all critical, were sent to her care of Central. One simply had the picture pasted to the envelope. "To this girl," it was addressed. Hazel read them, found their critical tone surprising, then gave them little mind. Some criticism went directly to the newspapers. "Miss Hazel Bryan, I have often been told by my friends that I am the world's worst correspondent, but to you, I will take the time to write this letter. I have just read the paper in which your name was mentioned, as having acted as a leader in persecuting a colored girl, naught nigger, in connection with this mess you have down there. I can only say that you are a disgr- I can only say that you are a disgrace to the female sex, a terrible American, and, I am sure, a sore disappointment to God. Maybe when you grow up, if you ever do, you will be ashamed of yourself. I hope so for your sake. I could say much more, but I won't bother." A disgusted reader of the Milwaukee Journal. P.S. I am white. Anyone favoring what Hazel had done was probably disinclined to say so, but in one letter to the governor, Hazel came in for a bit of sympathy. "One feels compassion for the white children who have been handicapped with hatred by alleged adults," wrote Lucille Toll of Long Beach, California. Around Hazel's church, there was embarrassment over the photograph but little surprise. Hazel, they knew, didn't do anything halfway. But at Central, there were repercussions. Mrs. Huckabee didn't recognize the screaming girl in the picture at first, nor did any other school officials. "Small wonder," she later wrote. "We weren't used to seeing our pupils like that." But she soon realized it was Hazel Bryan, that girl who had tried to poison herself a few months earlier. She promptly hauled Hazel into her office. Hazel hadn't a clue why. She thought that maybe it was to hand over some more letters. "I told her that I was distressed at the picture because hatred was a feeling that destroyed the people that hated," Mrs. Huckabee later wrote. She shrugged. Well, that was the way she felt, she said. "I hoped anyway that I would never see her pretty face so distorted again. I certainly hadn't recognized that that ugly face was hers. More breath wasted." Sure enough, the following Monday, Hazel was at it again, telling the Democrat, in a line cribbed from her preacher, that had God meant for whites and blacks to mix, he'd have made them the same color. "The boys and girls pictured in the newspapers are hardly typical, and certainly not our leading students," Mrs. Huckabee wrote her brother in New York. "The girl with mouth open behind the Negro girl is a badly disorganized child, with violence accepted in the home and with a poor emotional history." She returned to Hazel in a postscript. "Don't think I haven't reprimanded this child," she added. Hazel's parents found her sudden notoriety sufficiently alarming to pull her out of Central. Whatever educational advantages it offered paled next to concerns for her safety. Only recently, having been so intent upon keeping Elizabeth out of Central, Hazel soon ceased to be a part of Central herself. For a few days, she attended a small high school near Redfield. But staying there meant living with her grandparents, who were poor and had neither a car nor indoor plumbing. For Hazel, accustomed to a doting father and the creature comforts of home, that wouldn't do. So she quickly transferred to Fuller High School in rural Sweet Home on Little Rock's outskirts, which was actually closer to her house than Central had been. As linked as she became to the Little Rock Nine then, Hazel Bryan did not, in fact, spend a single day inside Central with any of them. The decision to move Hazel did protect her from a great menace: herself. Had she remained at Central, she would surely have joined in the despicable deeds to come. Instead, she returned to pursuits that mattered far more to her than race relations. While registering at Fuller, she spotted a handsome, dark-haired boy named Anton Massery. "That one's mine," she told her sister, who had transferred with her. And before long, he was. Hazel traded in the airman's ring for a stereo. America had seen its last of Hazel for the next forty years, except, that is, for the Hazel of the picture, which appeared with ever-increasing frequency as the Little Rock story evolved from current events to old news to history. In nineteen sixty, the picture graced the cover of its first textbook, a collection of materials on the schools' crisis. With each iteration, her image increasingly became the official face of intolerance. Chapter Thirteen The nineteen fifty-seven college football season was about to begin for Sidney Williams. Williams, who'd grown up five blocks from the Eckfords, was a junior at the University of Wisconsin and was about to become the first black in the history of the Big Ten to begin a season as starting quarterback. He expected trouble, but Elizabeth's example helped embolden him whatever came his way. John Lewis was a seventeen-year-old theology student in Nashville when he saw the picture. He couldn't discuss it with his parents back in Troy, Alabama, who had spent their lives keeping their heads down, but he, too, felt inspired by it. "We all walk through that crowd with her," he recalled. Later, he hung the photograph on the wall of his office in the United States House of Representatives. Roger Wilkins, twenty-five at the time, belonged to one of the first families of black America. Roy Wilkins was his uncle. He'd been about to join a New York law firm when he saw the photograph. Here, he realized, was someone confronting the impregnable wall of southern segregation, something he realized he could and should do, too. He embarked upon a career of civil rights activism instead. Seventeen-year-old Julian Bond, who later led the NAACP, began asking himself a simple question: Could he pass the Elizabeth Eckford test? Others were similarly moved. Back in Little Rock, though, things were at an impasse for the two-and-a-half weeks that followed Elizabeth's walk. As lawyers, judges, and politicians wrangled, the Little Rock Nine stayed home. Having received their textbooks and even some of their homework assignments from Central, they were tutored. With the time they now spent together, largely at the Bates home, Elizabeth got to know those black students she hadn't previously met. Melba Patillo was highly dramatic and outspoken. Jefferson Thomas talked slowly but had what Ernest Green called "a hangman's humor." Gloria Ray seemed confident. Of them all, she felt fully comfortable only with Minnie Jean Brown, whom she'd known from her neighborhood, and Thelma Mothershed, whose people were also seamstresses, and who, with her health problems, was even more vulnerable than she. With several of the others, particularly those whose parents were college graduates, she sensed a class divide. Only Minnie Jean and Thelma, she felt, would not disparage or belittle her family. The others got to know Elizabeth as well, at least as much as she allowed. With events at a standstill, enterprising reporters like the Associated Press's Stan Misler looked for stories in unusual places, like Little Rock's black community. Among those Misler polled was Oscar Eckford Sr. "His granddaughter did the right thing by enrolling in Central," Eckford said, while stressing the need for goodwill between the races. "Among Negroes, humbleness is a way of life," he said. Meanwhile, the mob gathered daily outside the school. "Faubus actually needed bloodshed to save face," Daisy Bates charged. "This place is plenty hot, and growing hotter every day," she told NAACP officials in New York, noting that the local White Citizens Council was importing rednecks from rural eastern Arkansas to keep things boiling. Bob Considine described the rabble-rousers as "town loafers, slattern housewives, old pappy characters, and soiled children too young for school," what we used to call "po white trash." "One man entertaining the crowd," he wrote, "gave off a broken roquefort cheese smile." More fancy whites in Little Rock may have found them and their shenanigans embarrassing, but as the Reverend Billy Graham wrote, "they had a cause in common." Only Washington, it seemed, could break the impasse. Intervention was not something for which President Eisenhower was temperamentally or politically suited. He was reluctant to call in the army, which had not been sent south since Reconstruction, and part of him actually sympathized with the segregationists. To the author of the Brown decision, Chief Justice Earl Warren, Eisenhower wrote of "understanding those Southerners concerned that their sweet little girls are not required to sit in school alongside some big, overgrown Negroes. So Ike did nothing, let alone follow Senator Hubert Humphrey's plea to take those colored children by the hand and lead them into school where they belong." In Washington, no strong voices raised to tell the world the conscience of America is not that of Arkansas, the Fresno Bee editorialized. Elizabeth Eckford and her people, however, have the assurance that their government is studying the situation. Many, at least outside the South, shared such frustrations. Theater-goers attending a production of South Pacific on Long Island booed so lustily when the Navy nurse Nellie Forbush said she hailed from Little Rock that the show had to be interrupted. But the most surprising, and for that very reason one of the most powerful protests, came from a hotel room in a small town in North Dakota. Chapter Fourteen When I see on television and read about a crowd in Arkansas spitting on a little colored girl, I think I have a right to get sore. The speaker was Louis Armstrong, who on the night of September seventeenth, nineteen fifty-seven, was preparing to play with his All-Stars in Grand Forks, North Dakota. There was a Grand Forks Nine, too, the nine blacks living in a town as of nineteen fifty of twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty-six. Grand Forks did not figure to be a key front in the civil rights struggle. But this was not all Armstrong had to say that night to a twenty-one-year-old journalism student and jazz buff at the University of North Dakota named Larry Lubinow, who was moonlighting for a dollar seventy-five an hour at the Grand Forks Herald. With Armstrong in town, performing as it happened at Grand Forks's own Central High School, Lubinow's editor, an old-timer named Russ Davies, sent him to the Dakota Hotel to see whether he could land an interview. Perhaps sensing trouble, Lubinow was, he now says, "a rabble-rouser and a liberal," Davies laid out the ground rules. "No politics," he ordered. That seemed hardly necessary, for Davies was a very conservative editor at a very Republican paper. And with his famously sunny, unthreatening disposition, Armstrong rarely ventured into such things, anyway. "I don't get involved in politics," he once said. "I just blow my horn." It wasn't so simple, of course. During his long career, Armstrong had broken down innumerable barriers, the latest of which was the ban on black guests at the Dakota Hotel. But Lubinow had been following the Little Rock story. Oddly enough, federal Judge Ronald Davies, no relation to the editor, who had ordered that the desegregation plan there proceed, was from Grand Forks. And like everyone else, Lubinow had seen the picture of Elizabeth. Armstrong's road manager told Lubinow that he couldn't see Satchmo until after the concert, but that wouldn't work. It was past his deadline. So with the connivance of the bartender and bell captain, both of them drinking buddies, Lubinow sneaked into Armstrong's suite, masquerading as a bellhop, delivering the trumpeter's room service lobster dinner. He told Armstrong he'd be fired if he didn't come back with a story. The musician, dressed in a Hawaiian shirt and shorts, couldn't let that happen. He agreed to talk. And talk he did. Lubinow stuck initially to his editor's script, asking Armstrong to name his favorite musician. "Bing Crosby," Armstrong replied. But soon Lubinow brought up Little Rock, and he could not believe Armstrong's angry response. "It's getting almost so bad a colored man hasn't got any country," he said. Armstrong had been contemplating a goodwill tour of the Soviet Union for the State Department. "They ain't so cold but what we couldn't bruise them with happy music," he'd explained. But now, he confessed to having second thoughts. "The way they are treating my people in the South, the government can go to hell," he went on, offering further choice words about Secretary of State John Foster Dulles. "The people over there ask me what's wrong with my country. What am I supposed to say?" As he spoke, he got progressively worked up. Eisenhower, he charged, was "two-faced" and had "no guts," while Faubus was a "no-good motherfucker." Writing for a family newspaper, Lubinow somehow turned that into "uneducated ploughboy." Armstrong bitterly recounted his experiences touring the Jim Crow South, like the times when whites, including some of the very folks who had just cheered him, rocked his tour bus menacingly when he and his musicians prepared to leave town. He broke out into the opening bar of the Star Spangled Banner, inserting enough obscenities, "Oh, say, can you motherfucking see by the motherfucking dawn's early light?" to prompt the band's vocalist Velma Middleton to try to hush him up. Lubinow, from the small farming community of Northwood, North Dakota, was shocked by what he heard, but he also knew he had a story. He skipped the concert and went back to the office, typing up what he had on yellow copy paper. "The ambassador of jazz trumpeted a new tune today," he wrote, before laying out that novel song's jarring notes. The Herald printed his story the following morning, taking care to remove the word "hell." But dubious that Armstrong would have said such things, the Associated Press editor in Minneapolis refused to put the story on the National News Wire until Lubinow could prove he hadn't made it all up. So he returned to the Dakota, and, as Armstrong was shaving, the Herald photographer took their picture together. The caption referred to "Louis Satchmo Armstrong, who got all lathered up about segregation here Wednesday." Lubinow himself was cropped out. Lubinow then showed Armstrong what he had written. "Don't take nothing out of that story," Armstrong declared. "That's just what I said and still say." He then wrote "solid" on the bottom of the yellow copy paper and signed his name. The story flashed across the country. Douglas Edwards and John Cameron Swayze reported it that night on the network evening news programs. Armstrong's road manager quickly claimed that Satchmo had been tricked and that he regretted his statements. But Armstrong would have none of that. "I said what somebody should have said a long time ago," he declared the following day in Montevideo, Minnesota, where he gave his next concert. He closed that show with a Star Spangled Banner, the traditional version, that is, minus the obscenities. Armstrong took it from all directions. The writer Jim Bishop called for a boycott of his concerts. The Ford Motor Company threatened to pull its advertisements from a Bing Crosby special on which he was to appear. Van Cliburn's manager refused to let him perform a duet with Armstrong on Steve Allen's talk show. A radio station in Hattiesburg, Mississippi threw out all his records. "The Russians," an anonymous government spokesman lamented, "would relish everything Armstrong had said." Meantime, Sammy Davis Jr. criticized him for not speaking out ten years sooner, but Jackie Robinson, Lena Horne, Eartha Kitt, Marian Anderson, and Sugar Ray Robinson quickly lined up behind him. In the black press, there was surprise and delight. "Dulles might just as well have stood up at the United Nations and led a chorus of the Russian National Anthem," declared Jet, which had once labeled Armstrong an Uncle Tom. Armstrong had long tried to convince people throughout the world that "the Negro's lot in America is a happy one," it observed, but in one bold stroke, he had pulled nearly fifteen million American blacks to his bosom. "Any white confused by Martin Luther King's polite talk need only listen to Armstrong," the Amsterdam News declared. "Armstrong's words had the explosive effect of an H-bomb," said the Chicago Defender. "He may not have been grammatical, but he was eloquent." "Louis made more friends with his statement than he has in a decade," Leslie Matthews wrote in the New York Age. But it was a letter in the Afro-American that put it best. "When Louis Armstrong gets riled up," it read, "the country is really going to hell." Because of its "total unexpectedness," wrote Buddy Lonesome of the St. Louis Argus, Armstrong's statement, in all probability, had more devastating effect on President Eisenhower's administration and national leaders than many mouthlings of recognized Negro leaders. Whether, as Satchmo's devoted fans believe, what Ike was about to do in Little Rock can be attributed to Louis Armstrong is unclear, but there can be no doubt that what Louis Armstrong did in Grand Forks, North Dakota, could be attributed to Elizabeth Eckford.
Context of White Supremacy The number to dial is seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. We've got about a half hour, a little bit more than a half hour, remaining. Definitely dial in. Looking forward to hearing feedback from folks listening. Number one more time, seven six zero five six nine seven six seven six, and the code is five six four nine four three pound. Press star six if you would like to participate. We should have at least three folks on the line before I hit. We should have at least three folks on the line before I hit the phone lines. One note, I'll get in. The section where they referenced J.A. Rogers as one of the many contemporary black people victims of racism who spoke out and wrote about this incident. It says, "The picture," talking about the photograph of Elizabeth Eckford being taunted and terrorized, "the picture ought to be framed and hung up in every Negro home as a reminder to all to stand up more vigorously for their rights," urged J.A. Rogers in the Pittsburgh Courier. "Surely her example ought to touch the hearts of even some hostile whites and make, in the years to come, some of those who spat at her and shouted contemptuous names be ashamed of themselves." Mr. J.A. Rogers, I would even say with that, not bashing a victim, but even with that, I would say it might suggest a failure to really understand white people, that it is never about shame, remorse, guilt, when it comes to terrorizing black people. That's what, that's not what this is about at all. There might be second thoughts about being caught doing this out in public under certain circumstances, but in terms of feeling as though I shouldn't have mistreated a nigger? No, that just, that just does not factor in at all, unless it's somehow bad for business for it to have been done that way at that particular time. But that's what, everything, the entire universe, that's what it's all set up for in the mind of racist man, racist woman, racist child. I could be wrong, and again, not criticizing, but just that stood out among other things. The C-9325, the two females at block numbers, and 1922, you're all with us, feel free.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to talk about how it's amazing how they talked about Elizabeth getting all those letters from all those white people all over the world, and how terrible those white people were down south. Now those same white people are, have all these, all these black and brown people in their countries, and they're acting the same way, but when their countries are all white, it's okay. And, and that one man in the picture where he's holding the fish up, I can't think of his name, David Fitz, whatever, you know, like, like his, you know, he's so, well, that's another word white people always use, progressive, you know, that, that's, that's one of their words. And, 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 like, he's, he's so progressive because his mother studied in France, and, and she was, uh, a, um, someone who was a component or whatever of birth control, which means, of course, killing black children. And, you know, that, that's supposed to be so progressive, quote-unquote. And, uh, you know, that's all I want to say for right now.
Any of our other callers have anything they want to share?
Hello, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on Louis Armstrong. Uh, all I can say is, uh, uh, he was, he was brave at the time for saying what he said. And it needed to be said at the time, and I applaud him for that. Um, I also, I thought it was very funny how he said that he would be at, performing for these white folks, and then the same white folks that were clapping and cheering him, cheering him on when he was performing, were outside, uh, 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 by his bus, you know, harassing them on his bus as he was preparing to leave. I thought that was, uh, I thought that was very, uh, I thought that was funny, you know? Not laughing at him, but, uh, just, uh, I just thought it was very trifling of these white folks to, uh, to do that, you know, but to be expected.
That's right in line with what the female caller just mentioned about these white people writing all these letters, and "we empathize with you," and "oh, they treated you so poorly," and "those white people in Little Rock are a disgrace," and "these same white people terrorizing black people that, you know, are right down the road from them." It's the exact same thing, we can go cheer you and then be out there throwing rocks at your bus in the next ten minutes. I mean, it's commitment above all else to the system of white supremacy. I think there are a lot of examples of that, even with the Mammy, our character in Melba, Patilla Beale's book, where he's got a mammy on the one end that he alleges to love and gives her his allowance money and everything, but then he still stops talking to her in disgust when he's found out that some other white person got her in the bedroom before him, in my opinion. I'll mute my line.
Yes, uh, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, I thought it was interesting that, uh, they said that they had to import some rednecks from a different part of Arkansas. I'm sure that they probably had enough in their particular region to suffice. I can't see them having to import, I mean, I know that they came from other counties, even other states to participate, but, you know, uh, I think the author is, uh, using some propaganda here to try to sway things to a universal-type meaning. The part where, um, Hazel's image was increasingly, increasingly becoming the official face of intolerance, you know, it's surprising the way that they can change words. It would be more like the face of racist, racism. And it seems they've replaced the wording "racism" or "racist" for "tolerance." You can even see that in some of the Southern law centers, uh, literature, referring to tolerance instead of just blatant racist.
Mm-hmm. I, I heard, it might have been in reference to the Little Rock situation, but that's a common way that white people practice racism, white supremacely, deliberately, in my opinion, when they use words like intolerance, and they have quite a few, prejudice, bigotry, hatred, they have a lot of these different terms that they'll use, as opposed to race relations, as opposed to calling it what it is, and that's white supremacy racism. And I, I think the sentence that they used, they said that "we have become more tolerant and less racially violent." And I said, "Now, just imagine if I was explaining that to somebody on an individual basis." And I said, "Yeah, I've, I've come a long way, I've improved as a person, I've become more tolerant, less racially violent." Like, I don't know how people, it just, it sounds crazy to me. More tolerant and less racially violent? And even if I'm just breaking down the tolerant aspect of it, like, tolerant, what does that word really mean in that context? Like, "we've become more tolerant," like, to me, it even, it suggests, just with that term, "I don't really like you, I don't really like being around you, but I'll put up with it. I'll deal with it, I'll accept it for the next five minutes, or for this workday, or however long I gotta put it, but I really don't like this, but I'm, I'm putting up with it." That's what it suggests to me. It's, it's implied in the term a dislike of non-white people, black people.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, I wanted to know, what was the purpose of, um, of the author putting that guy who posted that ad in the newspaper? Um, it, well, it kinda seemed like he was, he put it there to say that, you know, there were some, you know, some white people had good conscience, and, and, uh, I think the, the guy who posted that, um, that ad, I think he said that when he would walk down the street, people who wanted to congratulate him had to look, uh, be, um, from side to side and be, and over their shoulder, just to, uh, tell them, um, how they appreciated, but yet, I don't know, I don't know, I was just wondering why, why they put him, why they, why did he put, um, why did he mention, why did he mention that guy in, in the book in the first place?
Davis Fitzhugh, just giving his name real quick, Davis Fitzhugh, uh, who put the one-page article, not one page, but put the article, uh, in the paper, saying, "Study this picture and no shame." I'll mute my line if other people wanted to chime in on this.
My guess is that he said it because he wanted to show that all white Southerners weren't racist, like, you know, this guy is all right, you know? Because he's from, his, he has parents from, that studied in Europe, you know, so you know he can't be racist, you know, that, and other so-called, quote-unquote, "progressive" tendencies.
They even mentioned that he married a woman from Chile or something like that. I was like, what's that got to do with that?
Yeah, like-
I don't know.
Like, they aren't white, yeah.
I would, uh, refer back to the beginning of the book. We keep going back to how he's used a quote from Frederick Douglass fits right in. It's the way that we look at others as non-white people, the way we look at others, and then the way that we look at ourselves. See, if he does something like that, put that little bit in there, just a little bit, we can be bamboozled, we can be fooled into thinking, "Oh, well, you know, maybe the, there wasn't a lot of white people that didn't feel this way." And those that was out there rioting or objecting to integration was just a small percentage, or they were the ignorant, ignorant ones. They were, weren't the educated, the, uh, the more cultured whites, if you will.
White redemption, that's a term I hadn't used in a while, but I wrote about it in a film review, and a listener reminded me of that. And I think that is a consistent, integral aspect of how white people practice racism, white supremacy. It's frequently used in film, uh, literature, when they're talking, and events like this, where you've got clear, irrefutable evidence of white people being racist, they have to find a way of preserving the idea of good white people, that this is not all white people. They have to find a way of doing that, either by rehabilitating the offending white person or persons, where they somehow have got, that I think is happening right here, where Hazel will become a sympathy, a, the subject of sympathy, and she will end up being the victim. I heard the author say that, how ironic the turn of events that the white woman is now saying that she is the victim, uh, needs time to heal her wounds. Classic. Uh, that, or they will find some white people who were, quote-unquote, "good white people." These were racist white people who were helping out the black people, and I think you've got both elements in Mr. Margolick's work, uh, with Mr. Fitzhugh, just to reference, because I think this is important, this is what Dr. Kanban, when he says statistically insignificant. Now, we can mention this, if this is accurate, if this happened, it's no problem, but we want to make sure that the emphasis falls on what was the response from white people, if this is statistically insignificant. And what he said, "Local reaction to Fitzhugh's gesture fell into what for Isaacs had become a recurrent pattern throughout the Little Rock story, politely not noticing the unpleasant." It was, Isaacs wrote, "as if Fitzhugh had committed some act of indecent exposure outside the church on a Sunday at noon." Now, even that right there is significant. Attention, I mean, that's Dr. Wellesley moment. Uh, you've done some, you have violated the religion of white supremacy somehow, and done so in a manner suggesting, uh, something with his genitals. One to think on, continuing, he writes, "Ninety percent of his friends simply ignored the ad," said Fitzhugh, "whose farm had both white and black tenants living in the houses with running water, electricity, and even television sets." This was a benevolent white person. "They chalked it up to his eccentricity. 'They see me as a turncoat, I think, but they never say it to me,' he said. Some pool hall elements in town cussed me out on the street but wouldn't stop to talk when I tried to do so. The few who complimented him looked around first or took him behind something before doing so." The female caller who talked about white people having a code on display again right there, I even gotta be careful about being publicly seen speaking to you, much less complimenting you, on trying to call us out for being incorrect or practicing racism. That code on display once again, but the statistical insignificance of his act, it seemingly had no impact, most white people ignored it. I'll mute my line.
And, uh, yeah, that, that, um, movie, uh, The Little Rock Nine, I think it came out in the nineteen eighties, I think, and, and the movie, they had Mrs. Huckabee's character, played by Paul Newman's widow, as playing, I mean, like, she was a saint, and, I mean, I, I didn't know anything about the, the white people at, at that particular time, because I had never read anything about that, but, um, but then when we, we studied Melba Patelos' book, uh, a few weeks ago, I mean, she was like, talking about almost the exact opposite of Miss, you know, Mrs. Huckabee, you know, how she was just a typical, you know, sorry to say it, but bitch, you know, she wasn't no sweet, angelic. And e, and even in this book, you know, they got pictures of her smiling, and like, she's helping Elizabeth, and, you know, stuff like that.
That's something that should be noted, too. I'm glad you all have been picking that out, the photographs. Uh, I've seen, other than the photograph of Hazel yelling at Elizabeth in front of the school, other than that, um, they have photographs of a lot of white people. They have a photograph, a baby picture of Hazel, they've got the picture of Mr. Fitzhugh with his fish, smiling white person, they have a photograph of Miss Huckabee, another smiling white person. Uh, I think I've seen one photograph of Elizabeth, and she's not smiling, she's sitting at a desk with a pencil. Uh, they even have a photograph of, uh, Miss Lorch confronting the white people, like, I would even say pay attention to that, because this is not a book that has tons of photographs. So if you're seeing a lot of images of helpful white people, smiling white people who are not racist like that, is, that's something that should stick out a lot for people who have the actual book that are reading along and can see the images.
Yeah, and, and another thing, also, in the movie, uh, like I said, I, like I said, at the time, I didn't know anything about The Little Rock Nine, but in the movie, they depicted Minnie Jean as being a bully, and, 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 and just a troublemaker, you know, and all that, and, and stuff, and, you know, and then, you know, find out, of course, that she's nothing like that, you know? Yeah, that's, that's another thing.
They have, they also have a picture of Louis Armstrong with shaving lather all over his face. The picture's black and white, he's looking real dark, and a white shaving cream is all over his face, got this big smile on his face. Uh, I just wanted to say, um, what's the guy's name, uh, Lubinow? It sounds as if he set Louis Armstrong up. Did it look like that to anyone else?
Yeah, I noticed that, too.
Um, I don't think so. I think, uh, what's his name, Louis said it himself that he wanted that to be printed, so, um, verbatim, you know, so, I think, the way that Louis was described, I think he was that dude, that, you know, he was that alpha male, and he wasn't, you know, he wasn't afraid to speak his mind. I don't think it was set up. I don't think it was set up. That's just my personal opinion.
Well, earlier in the book, a couple of white lawyers invited a black lawyer to have a coke, and I guess it was against the law for blacks and whites to sit together in that establishment, but white people would do that, they would create situations to, I guess, watch you with them out of, and see how you're gonna respond.
Yeah, that's a real good point, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
With the Satchmo thing, I also thought it was important, uh, he said that some black, it seemed like a lot of black people were very supportive of him doing this in this article coming out, uh, but it, I think it also mentioned, I think called by name, Sammy Davis Jr., uh, having a gripe of some sort, saying that he should've spoke up and said this sooner. Um, just like to point that out, that tendency to gripe and complain fault-fond with other black people, unfortunate tendency, something we should be trying to work to minimize as much as possible. Uh, I also, uh, thought this was important, it reminded me of the last book, really, I think, the very first study session that we did on Warriors Don't Cry, where she was talking about how painful it was to be back, I think they were at like, the fortieth or thirtieth anniversary, and they were outside, and she was, the reporters were there, and she was trying not to cry, and reveal how much pain she'd experienced, and we were talking about, you know, that is another part of how we're victimized, where we're not being honest about our feelings, and not talking about it, not revealing that, hiding that pain and the trauma that we have endured as a result of racism, white supremacy. The passage where Elizabeth, after this first attempt, and she comes home, and her mom sees that it's been difficult, and that she's been crying, and this is on page, well, my page fifty-eight, it says, "Elizabeth tried to say that she was alright, but she couldn't speak." Has this in quotes, "Don't let anybody see you crying, baby, brace up," her mother told her. "That's just what some people want to do, see you crying." And, I mean, the title of the last book is Warriors Don't Cry. I do think that is important to not minimize that, because I think that is said a lot as well, uh, that if you reveal your feelings in front of white people, number one, they don't care, and number two, they'll use that against you, uh, in some way, and I think that that also is something, I guess that just should be thought about, that shouldn't be, uh, reduced, uh, that, that, I'm sure that they heard that a lot, that you don't wanna, you wanna be strong, you wanna smile, you don't wanna come out and comply, I think Melba Patelos, she talked about that, how they were told not to talk about some of the really bad things that happened to them, because that could get powerful white people to say, "See, we've gotta end all this because these things are happening." So, I just think that that's important, the fact that this has come up again, them being encouraged, uh, told to hide how they're feeling, and the pain that they were carrying as a result of, of how they've been abused, and I'll mute my line.
Um, oh, sorry, go ahead. Okay, I was gonna say, what Gus just said, uh, this is really sad, but, but black people do that to each other, too, and that, I know that's, uh, you know, the, the part of, you know, our, our victimization, we try to be strong with each other, and we don't, we usually, a lot of times, are not affectionate with each other, and if we know that another one of us has, has depression problems, or, you know, something like that, you know, we'll, you know, you know, behind their, that person's back, you know, they refer to them, you know, as being crazy, you know, like, like, that, that, that's a source of, of weakness, you know, and, uh, is, I guess it's something that we've, we've had to deal with, and we just, we just internalize that, you know, like I said, e- even when it comes to one another, you know. You can go ahead. You can go ahead and talk. I'm done.
I don't hear the male caller on that hearing, but, uh, we've got another six, seven minutes, the, the female, the other female caller from a block number, did you have something you wanted to share?
Oh, um, yes, um, you all were speaking about, um, showing your feelings, and yes, I can really see how the kids and the students back then, they were so strong, and I really admire that, um, so poised and so neat, um, that's what I love about, um, the Martin Luther King, uh, generation, and, you know, how they handled themselves, uh, through their struggles, you know, they just really make us look really good, and I, I just respect that generation so much. Um, we have a, a lot to learn from them, um, they handle themselves so well, so, such strong students and kids, I really admire that generation, yeah. And, uh, we can't show our emotions, uh, you will be labeled, so, it's really funny how we operate today, yeah.
And, and that's also where that so-called myth of a strong black woman comes from. I think it's more endurance, um, actually, than, than strength, that's just my opinion.
Hmm, well, if you show any sign of weakness, you're looked down upon today, um, I don't know, it's like some kind of a game, um, you know, they're just looking for reasons to put you in an institution and label you today, so, um, you know, amongst all the, I call them poisons, that we, uh, consume, that enter the body and the brain and affect the human body, that's what I blame for, the emotions that we have today, and, um, you know, mental deficiencies, but any, um, any showing of, um, emotional deficiencies or incompetencies, you'll be labeled, and, um, I see that as a way to try to put somebody in an institution, so, I just appreciate the generations back then, because, of course, they probably didn't have all the, um, I call them poisons, that we face today, but, um, although, they probably did have some, um, type of things that, uh, they were given, but today, we are just played with stuff that is holding us back, so, yeah.
Last, uh, last few minutes, uh, if anybody else had anything they wanted to share before we get ready to wrap things up, anything else?
Yeah, I wanted to, uh, piggyback off something that you said earlier, Gus, about how, uh, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the students, the Little Rock Nine students, they were told not to cry in front of white people and all of that. Um, I, uh, last Sunday, uh, Dr. Uma Johnson, he came out here in Boston to speak, and, uh, he said that, uh, you know, pretty much all other races, um, o- other ethnic group, um, uh, their females are expected to be, you know, feminine, except the black female, you know, like, the black female's supposed to be strong, they can't show any emotion, and all of that, and, uh, that, I mean, um, I was reminded of that speech he gave when you were making those, uh, commentaries about the, uh, Little Rock Nine students.
Hmm. Yeah, it's, it's not something that is, is, uh, rewarded at all, um, particularly being emotional and showing feelings around racism, like, that is, I mean, that's just discouraged and punished, I think, on, uh, all occasions by everybody. Uh, if you are a non-white person, male, female, child, uh, it is not encouraged at all, um, so, yeah, it's just something I would, I would think about. I don't think anyone was being critical, I just, I know it was, it was something we talked about before, about whether you show your emotions, and that's a part of the trauma, not showing our emotions, and that's something that we need to do, I just, I think that, uh, it can be difficult under these circumstances, uh, given what we've all touched about, people are not necessarily receptive to the emotions that victims of racism have, uh, and need to share, uh, even other victims are not necessarily receptive, uh, to what we have to say, so, it, it definitely can be tough, although I, I totally agree, I think it's important that we need to, to be honest about our feelings, and, and even if we don't have a massive audience to share, and a lot of people that care how we feel, I think it's important to find those outlets, um, to be in touch, writing a diary can be important, even if you're just, uh, revealing and being honest and sharing those feelings and thoughts with your, with yourself, uh, I think they are important and should not be ignored, uh, that's definitely a part of trying to get some sort of health, as much or as little as you can have, uh, under the system of white supremacy. Uh, we've done our three hours, anybody have a last sentence, they wanted to make sure they got in, sentence, uh, before we wrap up, everybody good?
Uh, I have one more thing. Uh, here recently, we've had a rash of movies being made, uh, you know, The Help, and some of the other ones, we got a new one coming out with Jackie Robinson, it's called Forty Two. I was just wondering if you could speak on the constructive use of those type movies, how, if we do view them, and younger people see them, uh, what type of, uh, commentary should we be adding along with that type of, of, uh, movie shows or entertainment, in your view?
Uh, my view would be, this should just be a starting point. Uh, any of these films, particularly films that are supposed to be about actual historical events or people, um, this should just be a starting point for your understanding of racism, white supremacy, within the context of this specific individual, if we're talking about Jackie Robinson in that new film, uh, or if it's Little Rock Nine, 'cause I think the same thing came up with one of the female callers saying that she, she saw, I think, one of the Disney films, one of the movies about The Little Rock Nine, and, you know, it just gave her an inaccurate and distorted viewpoint about the situation, and I would say that that's the expectation we, victims of racism, black people should have, anytime we view any of these films, that's the expectation we should have from the very beginning, this should just be the beginning of a conversation, our research on this particular episode, we should make an effort to find out who put this project together, who financed it, who were the directors, who were the writers, who were the people, who were the powerful white people involved in the project. We should try to get as much access to that information as possible, and then we should also go and do our own digging, I know for Jackie Robinson, there are already movies that have been made about what Jackie Robinson been, uh, experienced. Jackie Robinson starred in one of those films himself, I used the sound clip from it on the program, uh, there are books written about Jackie Robinson, there's already a lot of material, uh, on him and what he experienced, so, we should do diligence with the expectation that it's gonna be diluted, a lot of the really cruel aspects of tacky, trifling white supremacy will be left out. Do some digging, uh, and if we're not gonna do that digging, at least know, hey, even if I'm not gonna go invest the time, uh, to read other books, or to check out some of the other films, documentaries that have been done on his life, I'm at least gonna know, this is not the full story, white people are very likely lying to me about all of the ugly things that they did to both Jackie Robinson and other black people, and I would say that that should be applicable, whether it's you're talking about The Help, The Little Rock Nine, Malcolm X, Rosewood, anything, anytime that white people come talking to you, particularly around these sort of events, the Tuskegee Airmen, uh, with Red Tails, a lot, not that long ago, uh, that should be the mind state, I think, we've had callers before who've talked about the importance of history, and knowing these events, I can only, again, echo, white, I think I guess was saying that on the program yesterday, white people, they are not ignorant about racism, white supremacy, they make it their business to be informed about all of these incidents, it's the history of their ancestors that they're talking about, and when they come out to do these sorts of works, like that Frederick Douglass quote, a whole lot of how they analyze what they're gonna be talking about is going to reflect how they view themselves as a white person in the system of white supremacy. So, just gotta keep that in mind when you go to see any of these films, or any of these works from white people, uh, that would be my, my parting shot, uh, for Jackie Robinson. I am gonna make an effort to see the film, uh, just, you know, have my, my thinking cap, my brain computer working, uh, when I go check it out. Uh, we will be back tomorrow, compensatory call-in, maybe the female caller who was saying she's just learning about racism, white supremacy for, uh, the first time, I'm still learning myself, maybe you can call in tomorrow and share about your experience, what you've learned, what's making sense, if things aren't making sense, uh... Background noise, I was picking up, yeah, the female caller, maybe you can dial into the program tomorrow, if you think it would be a constructive investment of your Saturday evening, if not, no worries, but, uh, yeah, dial in, that's the time we try to get victims to share their thoughts, views, experiences, so feel free, dial in tomorrow, it's nine PM Eastern, six PM Pacific, uh, every Saturday, compensatory call-in. Right on, right on. I did get, uh, an email, I had encouraged listeners to, uh, check, uh, information on the senators and different folks, uh, that tuned in, uh, have been listening to the sessions on The Little Rock Nine, uh, email I did get from one of our callers, Senator McClellan, nineteen fifty-seven, uh, he opposed US President Eisenhower's decision to send federal troops to enforce the desegregation of Central High School, uh, prior to the sending of the troops, under the command of Major General Edwin A. Walker, McClellan had expressed regret regarding the use of force by the federal government to enforce integration. "I believe it to be without authority of law. I am very apprehensive that such action may precipitate more trouble than it will prevent." That is from then Senator McClellan, nineteen fifty-seven in Arkansas. Uh, like I said, this event, you can learn a lot, a lot of powerful white people, a lot of important folks had to step up and, uh, make a comment or two about all this. Uh, also, one of our listeners informed me that, uh, the Jackie Robinson film is a Ken Burns project, that also is interesting, he has a history of doing documentary projects on racism, he did the film Unforgivable Blackness on Jack Johnson, cowbell would be ringing. Uh, I am a big fan of that film, I thought it revealed a lot of great information on white supremacy, doesn't mean that, uh, my suspicion of him would be lowered, but that would just be useful to know. Also, we had Ken Burns' daughter, Sarah Burns, she, uh, is following in her father's legacy, she did the film on the Central Park Five, cowbell would be there as well, uh, the five young non-white males who were, uh, arrested, convicted with raping a white woman, uh, in New York, this was in the late nineteen eighties, Sarah Burns, she was on the program, uh, in the winter of two thousand twelve, you can visit the archives, but that is pertinent info as well. Uh, I guess the final thing I was gonna get in, uh, it was, uh, a quote from, from the book, I had to move my page, uh, to get some of the other information, if I misplaced it, I will, uh, I'll just save it for next time, although I think I got everything, I think I'm good, I'll save it for next time, we'll have more time to, uh, discuss these matters. Uh, I will say, uh, you can visit the, uh, C-SPAN, they have an, about an hour, ten-minute talk with the author, David Margolick, talking about the book, he talks about why he put that Frederick Douglass quote, uh, at the beginning of the book, and he also, uh, he covered the O.J. Simpson trial, uh, for, uh, one of the popular publications, so he has a pretty, uh, interesting, pretty interesting history, uh, if you check out that article, he, he comments on quite a few of the things that we touched on in the conversation, I think he's done several, uh, talks, interviews, where there's video footage that you can check out, I'll put the C-SPAN footage on my, uh, on my Facebook page. We'll be back next week for session number three. Thanks, everyone, for tuning into the broadcast, I hope it was a constructive investment of your Friday evening, invest if you think the program is constructive, uh, anybody wanna do the prayer to wrap things up? Right on, I will do it myself, uh, it has been time, uh, Creator, please inspire us to use our imaginations and resources creatively to come up with alternative academic institutions, systems for our offspring that are massive improvements over what we have access to under the current system of racism, white supremacy, uh, we see the results of sending our offspring to racist man and racist woman to be educated, we've seen it for several generations, we know we can do better. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice as soon as possible. Replace white supremacy with justice as soon as possible, context of white supremacy. Signing out.
I'm a victim, brother.
You're a victim.
I'm a victim of four hundred years of conditioning.
Shut up.
The man has programmed my conditioning. Even my conditioning has been conditioned.